Good evening, everyone. Tonight is our East Point City Council Budget Workshop. Today is Tuesday, May 11, 2021, and we will start with our roll call. Ms. Walton, good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember Curly?
Here in East Point.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Lucido?
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore?
Here in East Point.
And Mayor Owens?
Here at East Point, thank you. Next item on this agenda is the Hearing of the Public. The Hearing of the Public is three minutes, and we always invite our residents and our guests for opinions, our discussion, or ideas to counsel. And at this time, we're going to open a hearing of the public. We ask everyone to be respectful because the Hearing of the Public is for all ages, and we never know what insightful millennial or child like mine is listening to. So please open a hearing of the public now. Ms. Walton, thank you.
All right, it is open. I'm not seeing any hands raised, and there's nothing in the chat, ma'am.
Okay, thank you again. The Hearing of the Public is now closed. We don't have a second Hearing of the Public during special meetings by our regular meetings, just to let everyone know who wanted to say something at this time. We want to make sure we give everybody a chance to hear them, and if you don't want to do the Hearing of the Public, please email us. Thank you. The Hearing of the Public is now closed. We are going right into the discussion of our fiscal year 2021, 2022 proposed budget, starting with the library. But before we go into this, we're going to let our city manager, Ms. Doom, take the floor. Good evening, Ms. Doom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Before you, you have a proposed budget for the 2021-22 year, which we had provided to you at, I believe it was our last meeting or the meeting before. We've also provided a line-by-line budget. Does everyone have this one line item? Budget that goes by departments? Okay, so we've got all of that for you this evening. And then we do have, of course, we've got a list of departments that will go first. And at this point, I'll just turn it right back to you, Madam Mayor. We can go from there.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, the first one we have is the library. We have our director, Ms. Todd. Last meeting, I congratulate you on being the director, Ms. Todd. I think we both have moved in position. I think I knew you before I was a mayor and a councilwoman. I was just a regular resident coming in there with my children, and you allowed me to do some events at the library. So now I'm the mayor, and now you're the director. So let's see how things change. So again, congratulations. We're going to start with you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have known each other a little while, so it's good to see you.
Good to see you. And you have the floor.
Okay, um, this is my first time doing one of these. I've been director for about six weeks. The budget that's before you is basically a maintenance budget. We're not changing too many things until our millage renewal happens, and that won't happen until November. But we have made some changes, and one of the big changes is we've added fact service, which has benefited our patrons greatly. Since we instituted it, it's been about two weeks. There hasn't been a day gone by that our residents haven't taken advantage of that service. And this is something that we need to do because a year ago, we were closed for three months, as you well know, and we have not... Our patrons aren't coming back the way they were pre-COVID days, and so the concentration must be towards promoting the library from here on out. We need our families and kids back in the library.
Now, Ms. Todd, what has been the loss, even though the patron's not coming in, the loss of funds as far as people not coming in and getting as many books and the revenue and things like that? How much has been lost since COVID?
Um, that hasn't been lost. With the exception of fines, we don't bring in as many fines. But we do have this fact service that we recently started. It costs 50 cents a page, which is a very good price for a resident, and it brings income into the library. We are planning on adding notary service as soon as the one employee that soon will be certified as notary. We're going to continue adding services as we see necessary.
Okay, that sounds good. How much revenue does the notary service bring in?
That has not been set. I have a library board meeting next Tuesday, and that's something we're going to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions for the director at the library? Mayor Paul Tim Lucido?
Yes, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question. I just want to tell Ms. Todd that I think she's doing a really good job over at the library. There's been a couple of compliments I've seen even online from residents posting. They're very excited about the fact service, so I think it's great that you are bringing that to the library. I don't have any questions about her budget.
Okay, anyone else? Councilmember DeMonaco?
One quick thing, ma'am. Congrats on becoming director, first of all, Sue, and happy to see you as director. Just wanted to, about the millage in November, we'll have the cities working together to have neutral information out then that we could give out to anyone visiting the library or anywhere else then. We'll have that available.
Yes, we will. We will be working on that very soon.
Cool. No, otherwise, everything sounds great, and thanks for coming out.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Thank you. As Sue has probably heard me, and you all have heard me, right now, there's 19 people on. The library needs your deposit bottles and cans, and I tell you every meeting that that bag full of bottles and cans worth about four bucks means nothing to you. But if you take it to the library and 100 people bring it to the library, that's $400 that we can buy a new book. So please, please, bring your bags full of... and wash them out while you're at it, but you're going to be doing a great thing by bringing your deposits over there. And I know every one of you got some down the basement right now, as we speak. So bring them over, bring them over there, and we will be very happy that you do that. Right, Sue?
Yes, thank you, and I will say this. The residents have been extremely generous with their bottles and cans. So we are soon going to be purchasing some things for the courtyard, a game table that will have a chucker-chess inlay, and then we'll have chucker and chess pieces so that people that would like to go out in the courtyard and play will have that opportunity.
Sounds good. I can't wait to... I can't wait to see some of the events that you are creative, your creative juices bring to the library in the city of East Point. Like I said, before I was any of these titles, we worked well together. We were able to talk about different events, and because of you, we have seen more events that have not been done in the city of East Point even before. So thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Well, congratulations on your role, Sue. And I will admit, every time I tried to take bottles back last year with COVID, they wouldn't return them at all. So I got a bunch in the garage. Bags and ba... I just gave up. I just keep collecting them. I don't even take them back anymore. I just get stacks, and I tried to bribe my son and taking them once they opened it back up, but he's like, I don't care about the money. So I will be bringing a whole big bag, maybe two of bottles from my garage.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman Moore.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll... I can make a motion to accept the library's budget as presented.
A second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Todd. You can stay if you like and hear the rest of the budget. I know it's a fun, fun time with directors. You can hear what other directors have to say, but it's up to you. But thank you, and you got a lot of work to do. So thank you for being a part of the team and staying so long. Don't leave no time soon, okay? No. Okay, we love you. Okay, thank you so much. Next, we're going to go to item B to the court. And we have our judge on here. Are we going to speak with the judge, or we have the clerk that works in there? How you doing, Judge, Honorable Judge Galen? Congratulations again. I can't hear you, Judge.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Hello, everybody. I will be speaking on behalf of the court today. Couple things. You have four months in now as judge, and I've gotten a good screenshot of what's going on at the court. I came into a court that was backloaded with cases probably for the last couple of years. We are the busiest single-judge court in the state. We have a very big docket. The budget kind of reflects some of the changes that I would like to implement to get us back on track. I am in the process of looking into rebuilding courtroom. Well, it's a city attorney's office right now, but Room Number Four, to turn it into a second courtroom so that we can bring in a magistrate or a part-time judge as needed to help with the backlog. The backlog is severe. By way of example, the worst docket I had, I had 130 cases scheduled for a Friday morning. Warren, which is the third-largest city in the state, the most that any judge at that court has ever done, was 56. So this is almost three times what is normal for a judge. I need help, and I think we can dig ourselves out if I get that help, and part of that help is to run a second courtroom. If I have that second courtroom, if we had 200 cases in a day, I could take 50 in the morning, 50 in the afternoon. I'd have a visiting judge who would have authority to handle, you know, all the types of cases that come through our court, and we'd have him do 50 or her 50 in the morning, 50 in the afternoon, and we could get, you know, easily dig ourselves out that way. That's the only way that we're going to be able to dig ourselves out. So that's a priority for me is to clear the COVID-19 backlog, and my goal is to do that by March of 2022. Also, a couple of things to implement. The court lobby is small, and as a practicing attorney, I've been in there a number of times where it's just overcrowded with people. We're looking to purchase some outdoor kiosks so people don't have to actually come into the building. If they're just there to pay a ticket, they can pay it outside the court building. I think that will help with the social distancing and take care of some of that. Other things that I'm looking into is a mental health court. There are no district courts in the county of McComb that have mental health treatment. A lot of the... a lot of courts have sobriety court, you know, drug court, but if you go a little deeper, a lot of times drug addiction and alcohol is just a mask for a deeper problem, that being mental health. So I'm looking into grants. It's probably going to take about two years to get a court like that up and running. My goal in funding it is to apply for grants... pardon me, I'm sorry. Now I turned that off. And see what I can come up with and put a team together so that we can start a mental health court. Other items in our budget that weren't there last year, I need financing for a visiting judge or part-time magistrate. Right now, we brought in three seasonal or part-time clerks. Of the three we brought in, their positions are being eliminated, but we have a very talented staff at the court. We just need to make sure we don't overwork them, and they really worked wonderfully under the pressures we've been under with the COVID situation and Zoom meetings and everything, and I'm sure Rich could verify how difficult it's been some days with these large dockets and trying to move cases. So really, that's... That's kind of the gist of where I'm at. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them the best I can.
Also, any questions for the judge? Councilman DeMonaco?
Sarah can go first. You can go first.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Um, so thanks for coming out, Judge Galen. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Um, the first, I guess, first question for the visiting judge or any of those part-time positions, I was curious, which of those, if any, were going to be to help with the backlog? Or was it to be permanent, all of those items?
No, I'm hoping that once we get caught up, picture of a mound of cases, and it's growing, growing, growing. I'm trying to get it down, and the only way that I'm going to get it down is with some help because as I'm taking it down a little, there's a pile growing over here. So I want to... I need to have help to dig out of the backlog that we have, and not the backlog from January 1st. COVID-19 has created a backlog in most of the courts in the state. And the criminal cases have priority, and we have to push those through because, you know, there's constitutional rights that attach to a criminal case that isn't otherwise there in the civil cases, and we don't want to take the... or make the mistake of not pushing it through and having a case that otherwise should be a conviction being set aside because of, you know, lack of speedy trial or, you know, falling through the cracks. So it would be until we got caught up, the magistrate position would be a position that would be permanent, a part-time magistrate. But the visiting judge, there's a pool of judges that will come in for a day. They get a day fee, and they will work all day and, you know, as needed. So they're not somebody that would go on the payroll that would... that, you know, the city would have to incur costs for benefits and things of that nature. So that's a good, a good way to get caught up without having to permanently attach the funds to the budget.
Sure. And then I had one other question I think might be kind of more from Mr. Blum because I think it's like a citywide sort of thing with the line item that just makes it kind of, well, just frankly, hard to follow from year to year. Like, I noticed that the court's budget's actually lower even with four additional positions and this visiting judge allocation. I was trying to figure out how was that the case, I guess, basically?
The retirement, the pension contribution allocation, in the past, it's been allocated based on active employees that were eligible for pensions. As more and more people have retired who were eligible for pensions, it came down to... We had this massive amount of money being spread over pretty much two departments, and it didn't make any sense anymore. So we took, except for police and fire, the general employee pensions were taken out of the departments and moved into the 299 department, the citywide department. And that was just... we didn't have a reasonable way of allocating it anymore down at a department level. And that's really why the... you'll see that in a lot of the departments have dropped specifically because there is no pension number in there anymore.
So we should probably just, if we're going to try and compare apples to apples, then adding the retirement in would be a decent way to do so then from last... from 1920 or 2021?
Correct. Yep.
So let's see, if we add 350, that'd be 1.77. So our amended budget right now is 1.615, and then it'd be 1.77 roughly. Okay?
That's a valid comparison.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Judge.
My pleasure.
I think Councilwoman Lucido had a question, too. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Yes, my question was for the part-time magistrate. What is... did you get based the salary off of, like, other municipalities and what they are paying their magistrates?
I based it in part off of court-appointed attorneys are the lowest-paid attorneys, and it's based on what they make per hour. The other is set by the State Court Administrator's Office, the daily fee, what the judges can charge. So I... because the magistrates can... magistrates can bill hourly, so that was factored in along with the daily rate, and I came out with an average, if we use them part-time, 20 hours a week for 52 weeks, this is what it would be.
Okay, yeah, because it just, when I was looking, it seemed like it was a little bit higher than the average from what I could find. So that's why I wasn't really sure where you came up with that, the rate.
Yeah, no, I tried to... I tried to do a balancing act if I brought in a judge versus a magistrate, but I definitely need a magistrate and where we are at. And I think, like I said, with that line item, if we get caught up, that line item's going to go down because I won't need the help as much.
Okay, and then my second question was, so you are going to have a court administrator. What's... what's the... I couldn't find the... what was the line item for the court administrator? Mr. Blum might be able to answer that, too.
Oh, Mr. Blum, as you heard. Hey, probably got to repeat it. Ms. Lucido, Councilwoman, I don't think he heard you.
Where was the line item for the court administrator on the line item budget?
Oh, it's the 704 account, 101136704. The appointed.
Okay. So that's the court administrator. Then where's the... sorry, where's the line item for the magistrate? Oh, that's just in the blue section, the footnote, okay? All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions?
It's a question for... it's for you, but it's for Director Blum. I know when we spoke about the budget a couple of days ago, and you talked about some funding that hasn't been... hasn't came yet. I don't know if that was... it's from the CARES Act. Was that the American Recovery Plan, or it was some budget item that you said we could use the funding for, but we don't know what for? Could it be used for the additional use of these employees?
Yep, that was the American Rescue Plan money that will be coming in. Part of it we expect in June, the other part we expect a year from then. We have not budgeted any of that money because... well, the rules came out at 1:00 yesterday, and it was only 151-page document. So haven't been through it yet to figure out what we can and can't spend it on. But none of that money is reflected, either the spending or the revenue is reflected in this budget.
Okay, so once that money... once you finish reading all those pages and can see if that can be used for those employees, it pretty much balanced the budget. I mean, you know, we won't have to pay that much, of course.
It could possibly.
If I may interject, I did have an opportunity to speak to a couple other jurisdictions regarding that money, and it's my understanding that some of that money can be allocated towards the COVID backlog.
Okay.
So I haven't gone through it, but I'm sure Mr. Blum will go through it, but in asking around and just kind of trying to figure out the budget part, that's what I've been told is that part of that money can be allocated, or it's supposed to be used for things like the COVID backlog at the court.
Right, okay. Thank you for doing that additional work. I think that was the question for me on that. Can we use that money for that... for those extra employees? And so I think the answer was given to me, but we're going to make sure on our finance end. Any other questions, counsel, for our judge? Saying none. Thank you, Judge Galen. If you want to stay and have fun with us, you're welcome to, because it's not like you have nothing to do, right? Again, congratulations, Honorable Judge Galen, and we will talk to you soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
I might sit by and just listen. Listen and learn.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
You, too. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is item C, the building rental code. Good evening, Director Hardcastle. How are you?
Mayor, can I jump in? We did do a motion for the library. Did you want to do it?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm just so excited, you know, so... Thank you, ma'am. That's why you're here, Ms. Walton, helping me out. Thank you. Can we get a motion, please?
Motion, we approve the court budget?
Okay.
Support.
Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you. Now, Director Hardcastle, your turn. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much. Some of the things that we've been working on with the city manager's office are streamlining our inspection process, improving services in the department, and striving to become more self-sufficient with regards to covering some of the costs of the services we provide. We're also working to do some community outreach and have very small changes in the budget with regards to working to implement the use of field tablets, excuse me, increasing our inspections and putting the new fee schedule into place. So we do not have many changes. We're staying with the same staffing levels, and thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel, for your time and consideration in reviewing.
Any questions for our director?
Madam Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the budget, it says that personal clerical positions were increased from four to six, and we found that four were not significant to perform the task required. I was just wondering when that increase took place?
That took place prior to me coming on board with the city. We have two full-time inspectors... or I'm sorry, excuse me, clerical staff and four part-time clerical staff that work in the office.
Okay, so I was just wondering. It wasn't... because the way it was worded was kind of... So, yeah, I'll motion to approve the building department's budget as presented.
Second.
One more question, then we can go. I should have asked it. Ms. Hardcastle, due to the fact that we have changed the fees, so we should have an increase in revenue, correct?
Madam Mayor, yes, my hope is that instead of our department being in the red, we will be able to be less reliant on the general fund, and that we will be able to move forward, you know, not generating a profit but covering our costs, Madam Mayor, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had, I think, two quick questions here, too, with our discussions, because I think it's hard for me to keep it straight about long grass. Are we going back then as a plan since, you know, we had the discussion about our contractor? Are we going back to code enforcement, enforcing long grass as opposed to counting on a contractor? Maybe that's still up in the air.
Well, while the... our city manager's office is working out the details, we are doing code enforcement and creating a list, councilmen, so that... and we're going to continue monitoring the properties, but we are looking forward to getting that work assigned and taken care of for our residents.
Okay, and then I saw this is probably sort of... I mean, it's for your department, but it's like the capital improvement plan, so maybe Ms. Doom also could answer. I noticed that the cars, you know, for the leases... I noticed that the, the cars, you know, for, for the leases, um, were a whole nother budget cycle out. Um, I thought we'd be doing that conversion sooner according to what council had voted on to return the leases and then get electric vehicles. Um, I was just curious as to why in the capital plan, um, that was a whole nother budget cycle out.
Um, councilman, if you'll allow me, I'll defer to, uh, Ms. Doom for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, yes, we were a little bit uncertain. There's been some discussion and, uh, and I will identify folks, but I understand there may be some additional discussion about electric cars and whether they're, uh, feasible at this time or if the council is in full agreement, majority agreement. So we're quite certain whether or not we should, uh, continue with, uh, the discussion that was had before or if council members have made some different changes. And I, I won't say too much. Mr. Blum, if you would step in also, sir?
I'm sure. We, uh, we put together the budget basically on a status quo with any known projects. Um, this general fund does have a one point seven, almost one point seven million dollar deficit for this year. Um, so we left, uh, we did not put electric cars in. We figured that would be part of the discussion tonight of whether council, uh, wanted to add that into the budget. But it, it was kind of, we, we hit that point of, uh, that's a pretty big number of a deficit and left it at that. Figuring we'd take care of it tonight of whether we're gonna add or not.
Okay, and I guess can we not, as part of that discussion? To me, it just seems like, so we have three full-time and seven part-time that take advantage of those ten cars, right? Can't we schedule a little differently so that we don't need ten full cars when seven of the ten are part-time? You know, can't we, um, get away with seven, eight cars even? Or even, you know, cuz then that would, of course, cut down on our leasing costs right now at least, um, per month.
Certainly would. Aaron, if you would weigh in, please, on, on the hours you have your inspectors working or when they're available? Can't hear you.
Can't hear you, ma'am.
There you go.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, thank you, Alki. Um, some of our inspectors do have a staggered, uh, schedule. Uh, I, it would be, uh, feasible to, uh, probably phase out, uh, two cars if that's, uh, council's, um, decision. Uh, at, we are short-staffed right now, but we are looking to fill a couple of ordinance and rental inspector positions. But, um, we could certainly, um, you know, assign cars differently and change the, the way we're doing that to accommodate if that's, uh, council's pleasure.
Okay, yeah, it just seems like to me, I, I guess I don't know how the rest of council feels, makes sense. You know, police officers do the same thing. Of course, they, you know, they're working twenty-four seven as opposed to, uh, you guys working mostly nine to five, right? So.
I was just trying to figure out, excuse me, I was just trying to figure out how would that work because you're, we're basing it off, you not having a full staff. Now, how would you do that with hiring more people? Would we need to bring those cars back? How does that look? To get rid of cars and then hire people and need them back? Would you be able to, uh, do something about, if, if we took back two cars and we hired more people? Is that, can you, can you do that? Is that a way you can do that? Or are you gonna need those two additional cars? Um, anyway, um, if, if you understand what I'm saying?
I do, yes, and thank you, Madam Mayor. You're absolutely right. I'm glad you pointed that out. Um, some of the things that we have done, um, particularly right now in ordinance, um, is we've, can send out, um, inspectors together or have inspectors working in the office in the morning and then in the field in the afternoon. There are a number of different ways that we can accommodate that if that's the, uh, council's decision.
Okay.
Um, it, it would just be, uh, juggling of the schedule internally and, uh, we certainly can do that.
Okay, can I clarify one thing? Um, one, um, so it was, we're budgeted, right, for three full-time, seven part-time? You're saying we're too short of that right now, is what you're saying, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so you, you were saying then, right, that we could do eight vehicles based off of full staff, potentially?
Yes.
Potentially, I'm not holding you to it at this very moment. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
What's the least, what's the least you, I'm sorry, what's the least you can do? Cuz you said eight, can we do seven? I'm pinching, being a penny pincher, can you do seven? What's the least you can do?
I think we could do it with seven, Madam Mayor.
Seven, okay, uh, I got the wrong card, D'Amico, you wanna go lower? You wanna go lower, uh, Mayor Phil Tim Lucino?
Need an auctioneer.
So, um, yeah, I mean, I would be, I think going, doing seven would be fine. And then if it is just not sufficient enough, then we buy an electric car to replace it at that time. I mean, that's, that's what I would, you know, if we already have that, we already made that decision to try to return some of them, not all of them, to convert them over to electric anyways.
Anybody else wanna?
Um, I'd like to jump in for just a quick second. Uh, when Director Van Herren was here, the plan was to have eight vehicles for ten, uh, individuals. And it never quite worked out, which is why we ended up back at ten. That doesn't mean it can't happen, it just needs to be very scheduled and very rigid of, uh, who gets a vehicle when. She's already operating down one because the charger has been out of service for, uh, over six months now. Um, so I guess you could say we've proven, you know, she can operate with one less. I, I mean, that, that's her department, she can do what she wants. But I would be unsure that she can actually handle it with only seven, just because we've tried it before.
Okay. Now, I think I'm saying, I think.
I may.
Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am.
That's why, that's why I was saying that if it, it does seem to be that it's not working out with the eight, like we, at that time, she could bring to council for us to purchase an electric vehicle to replace one of those cars if it doesn't work at seven. You know, like if, if she can't, it just, once she realizes we get to that point, she fills those positions and it's just not working out. Like, I'm not saying that we wouldn't approve that, I mean, at least myself, speaking for myself, like, I wouldn't approve that. I mean, I would probably approve that purchase at that time then.
Okay.
Now, you said the, uh, code enforcement, the quote enforcers hold a handheld, they hold a handheld computer when they're walking?
Madam Mayor, not yet. We're working to get them tablets. Right now, they have, uh, city-provided cell phones.
Okay, now the tablets, is that in the, um, in here, proposed budget?
Yes, it is.
The reason I say that is because when I used to work for the city of Detroit and I used to, um, collect money out the meters, we had one vehicle that would drop us off in certain locations. And we will, we will pick up the money, we would, sometimes we would walk blocks picking up the money. So, I mean, just being more strategic and, you know, maybe, you know, uh, they're being dropped off. I'm just, you know, thinking outside the box, being dropped off at one corner or something like that, walking two or three, couple of blocks. And then have somebody pick them up or work together on the same block doing the same side or something like that. I don't know if that has been done because I think a lot of, uh, people would rather see our code enforcement outside the cars cuz a lot of them, you know, so they can see the backyard from a distance or walking or things like that. I don't know if that works or, you know, how safe that is. If you have somebody looking out for them while they're walking, I don't know how that works cuz I don't do that job. But I was just saying how, you know, when I worked for a city and we were collecting money, which is more than ticketing people, we were able, able, uh, to walk a couple of blocks. I would walk, you know, downtown Detroit and some other areas to collect money out the meters. And sometimes that could be blocks away, just it was saving money from each, uh, each of us driving cars. We had that one individual that, you know, would watch us from a distance in that, in the middle of the road and one all the way down there and we would meet up and things like that. Um, so I was just thinking, you know, outside the box with that saved money as well to get a block done. I don't know how you guys operate. You guys have a specific area that you do? And if that area had, you know what I'm saying, I don't know how that works in the building department. Do you have a certain area that you, that you do and say, we're gonna do this area, I know how your roll call is. We're gonna, you know, go to this area. And then someone drops everybody off at a certain location and get that area together and looked at. And have the tablets, that's why I think the tablets would be better because you don't have to go back to the cars. You can do it right there, uh, pull up the address, whatever's wrong, write the ticket or send the ticket right then and there. Go to the next house and go to the next house and, you know, keep walking down.
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor, that, that's definitely something that's doable. Um, and right now, how they, uh, do it is each of the inspectors are assigned an area of the city and then that rotates.
Okay, okay. One day I'm gonna have to go on a, one day I'm gonna go on a field trip with you and see how that works.
Great.
I'm gonna go.
Thank you, Madam.
You always go on a, uh, police, in a police car and go and see how, what they do. I'm gonna see what you do too, so I can get a better idea of what you are dealing with. And I can't imagine what you deal with, so, um, any other, I think, does anyone else have a question for our director? Saying none.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Not for the director. Should I, I'm gonna ask this one for a councilman, D'Amico. Should I take my motion back and change it or should we make that motion when we discuss motor pool?
This is a good question, Adam, um. Uh, well, so I guess I was trying to figure out, I, I guess we've got the lease payments split by a bunch of different, right, Mr. Blum? The lease payments are split to, to a whole bunch of different departments. Um, and then, of course, it, it's also motor, motor pools buying them, but then each department's paying the motor pool, right? So, um, I, I think either way, we could do, do that now. And, um, whatever changes we make, right, Mr. Blum will recalculate and let us know what the, you know, total would be.
Yep. Yeah, the leases are, they don't run through the motor pool, they're charged directly to the department based on who's using the vehicle. So, yeah. Well, it's a matter of reducing each department a little bit to cover the reduction in vehicles.
Oh, cuz their lease is not, if we bought them though.
We bought them, motor pool would be renting them, right?
I got you, yeah, yeah. So then that would be good, council and Lucino.
To the return of three?
Three.
Okay, so I will amend my motion to approve the building department's budget with the one change of returning three of the leased vehicles.
Support.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you, Director. You're welcome to stay as well. Next item, D, Economic Development, DDA. Good evening, Ms. Holman, our director.
Good evening.
You can begin if you like.
Okay, um, well, uh, this afternoon, the DDA board met, um, and they approved the budget, um, as presented to, uh, council in the packet, um, moving forward. Um, according to Mr. Blum, there will be one or two small budget amendments, um, based on some, uh, costs coming in. Um, but they are looking forward to, uh, doing some, some more things in the future. Um, as it relates to economic development, we actually have been, the city has very, very fortunate um, to have, um, buildings selling and being leased and new business licenses being, uh, requested and applied for. Um, I've been working very closely, um, with the different, uh, departments on vacant commercial buildings, um, as it relates particularly to business licenses, uh, permit applications and then, um, commercial sales and, and also, uh, planning commission applications. Um, it is, it is sort of, everything's out there and, and trying to coordinate. But I am looking forward to collaborating both with, um, Ms. Hartcastle in buildings um, and then with Ms. Purcell in the clerk's office, um, in making sure that, um, everything is moving very smoothly for anybody who's willing to invest in the city. Some of the recent projects, um, we have a very large national senior medical facility coming in. Um, there is a, a great, uh, demand for rental space for beauty bars um, and event spaces, and then we have some carryout food, uh, establishments that are also going in. So it, it's nice to see, um, that there truly is a market going on in, in East Point. Um, the next big project is, um, really the, uh, redevelopment-ready community resurification process, um, as it relates to, uh, the planning commission, uh, some of our zoning ordinance amendments, uh, the DDA, and again, the buildings and business licenses through the clerk's office. Um, so those are some of the projects being, we, I'm working on, um, some of the bigger things. Um, and of course, um, our new website, very excited for that, um, and making sure that everything coordinates as the, uh, the state needs for our, our RC recertification.
Any questions for our director? Counsel? No questions for Director Holman? Wow. No questions, Councilwoman D'Amico?
I have a question.
Come on.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's still kind of early, um, so I, actually, I would like to get an updated list of our vacant properties. Um, I know there's some that are going through renovations and then there's other ones that are not yet. Um, if we could get an updated list of that, and I know that I believe that the county is not foreclosing on occupied properties again this year.
Yes, so you wanna list of the, um, the tax-foreclosed properties?
Yes, yes, all the tax-foreclosed properties.
Absolutely, yes. Um, last year, as it relates to the county treasurer, um, buildings that were in our dangerous buildings process, um, particularly those that were truly in, in poor condition, um, they did allow to move forward. So for instance, um, I've been working with Ms. Hartcastle. There are four very bad properties that we know for sure are vacant. So this is the kind of information I'm sharing with the Macomb County Treasurer. Um, in fact, I think two of them at least are padlocked, um, due to, due to different things going on. Um, and then we were helping Mr. Albright with the show cause list. So we're really trying to coordinate and streamline all these processes so that the timeframes will be shorter. Um, and then, you know, the, the, sort of the, the hammers that we can use are, are more efficiently applied. Um, but yes, as it relates to the treasurer, um, last year, we had a great working relationship.
All right, I can make a motion to approve the economic development and DDA proposed budget.
Support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mayor. Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Next item is, thank you, um, Ms. Holman. Next item is the police on fire. How you doing, Chief Sage? How are you? And Director George of the Fire, uh, of the Police Department? I'm sorry, we have both of our chiefs on here, the director and our deputy chief. Good evening, um, you may begin. Uh, you wanna start with, uh, you, Director?
Yeah, I could start, I, I could do an overview for both departments.
Okay, sounds good.
Hopefully yours is easy with me as the rest of the people, so. Um, typically, I'll just, this would be, uh, very brief. I'm just gonna discuss things that will basically will catch your attention on the budget. In respect to the police budget, if you look at all the line items, just about everything is the same as this year. There may be a slight, uh, increases in some line items or maybe even some decreases. Um, in respect to the staffing level, uh, for the police department, uh, we will remain at forty-four sworn, that includes myself. However, um, based on this American rescue funding, I'm asking you to consider, um, possibly looking at two more police officers so I can implement a traffic unit so I can take care of business in these residential areas. I mean, I get two to three calls a day about the cars and, and they're legit, they're legit, um, complaints. So I, I wanna do something about it and the traffic unit would pay for itself. But in respect to the budget right now, it's, uh, we're at forty-four. I just want you to consider that in, in the future. But in respect to the budget right now, it's uh, we're at forty-four, I just want you to consider that in, in the future. Um, overtime for the police department will remain the same. Um, equipment maintenance, there's, there will be a new line item this year for the body worn cameras, I have it at uh, sixty-one thousand five hundred. That's gonna be an annual fee that will pay the, it's basically a payment we have to pay every year for the data storage and for the cameras. And all associated equipment with that, so that, that is a new line item. And in respect to capital improvements, I have two uh, primary goals for the police department. Number one, I wanna improve the lockup area, I wanted to make it more safe for the prisoners. And I wanted to make it uh, more safe for the officers, the, there hasn't been any improvement in this area probably in thirty years. Um, it needs some ceiling tiles, uh, better lighting, flooring, the cells need to be painted, the floors need to be recoded. The tiles are asbestos, we had those tested, um, I have down twenty-three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to do that. We may be able to get some grant funding because uh, some of the things such as improved lighting. Uh, that may reduce risk and liability, we may be able to get some grant money for that. And the locker room has been an ongoing project, we're still doing research on that. Um, I have money set aside this year for the lockers, they're not cheap. And for next year, I have money in there to put uh, drop ceiling in there with new lighting, new toilets, urinals, flooring. To redo the shower, it's an absolute mess down there, we had a flood down there yesterday. Um, so we've been battling that for the last couple of years, so those are the two main capital improvements. Uh, for the police department, and the main thing is, again, the staffing will remain at forty-four, maybe we can work something out in the future. But everything else, I think the, the total increase from uh, the, uh, from the next fiscal year compared to this year is a hundred and twenty-four thousand. A lot of that has to do with the increased uh, costs and personnel such as, you know, medical pension expenses such of that nature, so.
Any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question for you really quick, so um, right now at, well, let's say this year throughout the police, I know we had a lot of retirements. Um, and I noticed we kinda came a little bit under budget, I'm assuming it's cuz we haven't been fully staffed at the police department, right?
Yes.
Um, I was wondering, have we been fully staffed at all since we approved the forty-four officers, brought it up to forty-four from forty?
I've been here two and a half years, we've been at full staffing levels for three months. Right now, I am two officers short, I have two on disability, long term. And I also have one officer in training, so in essence, I'm five officers short. It's very difficult, every time we, we get there, somebody else retires. And it was very, it was a rarity, uh, last year, we had, I think we had like five retirements. And that doesn't happen very often, especially for a small agency, and you know how difficult it is to hire police officers, everyone's competing. And all our neighbors around us are competing, they, they were running academies that, you know, half the students because of COVID. So it's, it's very, it's very challenging to hire people quick. And typically, when you do hire someone, it takes a good solid year before they're fully trained on their own, so. Matter of fact, we have interviews coming up this Thursday and Friday, we have ten people to interview for two, two vacancies.
Okay, so we really don't know exactly like how the police department is going to run, like how smoothly it's gonna run once we're fully staffed. Cuz we really haven't been there, so that's, that's good to know.
Yes.
Even though you're doing a fantastic job over there as always.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councilmember De Monaco, I think he had a question.
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Crowley?
Yeah, thank you, uh, George, um, it's been a long time since I asked this question about the forfeiture fund.
Yes.
Um, how can it be legally to be used now and how are we, how are we doing with the, the forfeiture fund?
Well, uh, before, before I came here, they disbanded the, uh, the narcotics unit for several years. Uh, we reinstituted it about a year ago and you could talk to Mister Blum, the money, the, the forfeitures are coming in. We're making a lot of deposits, uh, it's, it's, we're billing the fund again. And right now, we're paying for uh, we're paying for nine, we're paying for thirteen police cars, nine marked. Well, we will be paying for nine marked and six unmarked, so that's fifteen, fifteen police vehicles we're paying for out of the forfeiture. Which equates to about a hundred thousand a year, uh, that money can only be used for law enforcement purposes only. And uh, once we build that account even more, you'll see a lot of line items such as operating equipment. And even our operations, those numbers will be reduced, we will begin to use more forfeiture funds. But that's gonna take it probably another year to build, but right now, the trend I'm seeing is we're in very good shape right now.
Good, good, thank you.
Councilmember De Monica?
Thanks, Mayor, uh, maybe more of a question for Mister Blum again about the retirement, does that affect uh? The PD budget at all, it looks like it's certainly not the same way, but. Uh, you're muted.
Gonna unmute first. Um, police and fire are easy to identify, uh, the cost for them, so that is charged directly to those departments. Uh, so they reflect the increased um, contributions that are gonna be required for burners. So their costs have actually gone up, uh, where some, like I said, some of the other departments, it went to zero, but it all shifted to a different area. Of general fund, um, so theirs is a good apples to apples comparison because it's the same expenses.
Okay, thank you, and then just to confirm, uh, Director, uh, this, um. These line items in the budget do not include then these two traffic positions you were talking about, right, then we're saying?
Yes, sir, that's correct, I was told to hold off until we figure out, you know, citywide where we're at then. You know, maybe we could do something, even if I had to start off with one officer. And I could show you how effective that officer would be in, in a traffic position, then maybe we can reevaluate and hire a second officer later on down the road.
Now, did you, I'm sorry, Councilman, I don't know if you were done or not, okay, thank you. Now, you were talking about the American Recovery Act, did you take a look at it and see if it did pay for that officer?
The only thing that I read, it says for essential employees, I would imagine there would be police officers, um. But uh, as Mister Blum stated, it's a, it's a hundred and fifty page document, it's uh, it's not the easiest reading. And I just started reading it the last, a couple of days ago, so.
Okay, do you think that? Uh, you can show us how that looks with the officers and if we get that uh, grant or something like that, um, we can visit, revisit this?
Yes.
And then we're waiting on, well, that's in June, right, Director?
Yes.
We'll find more about if we get that, that money or not.
And if we did implement this traffic unit, I would give you monthly reports to show you how it's, how it's working. And you'll see the complaints and the accidents, we've had numbers of several accidents just in our residential area at the intersections. It's, it's every day and it's, and the, and the people are right, I, I drive around sometimes in my lunchtime just to see what's going on in the neighborhoods. And they're right, unfortunately, we can't have police officers in the subdivisions every day, all day, they're answering calls.
Right, yeah, I see it all the time because I stay right off of Nine Mile, um. Right by the freeway, so a lot of people cut on my street to, because they can't turn that left on Kelly. So I got all these people coming from the freeway and the street trying to cut, you know, uh, and they're speeding, you know. So my kids pretty much are in the backyard most of the time, so because of that. But um, we had several different, and when, before I moved here, it was always a police officer right at that corner. You know, and now it's not due to the, you know, the changes, with that, you know, eleven years now, so that's a long time ago, but it was very effective.
Right, and the officers write tickets, they're writing seven, eight hundred tickets a month, they're answering eighty-five calls a day and they, they answer twenty-six thousand runs a year. That's a lot of, that's a lot of calls for uh, uh, an agency this size, but you like, they do their best to keep things in check, they do a great job.
Yes, you all do. Now, were you gonna do a briefing with the fire department?
I can do the fire and then if, if you need any extra questions, I have my, my right hand fire guy, I'm online here. Um, any questions for police, any other questions?
I think Councilwoman Lucino wanted to.
Well, I just wanted to make a motion for police before we moved to fire.
Hey, yes, ma'am.
I'll make a motion to approve the police budget as proposed, staying at the current staffing levels.
Move just support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino? Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
We'll run along to the fire department.
I respect the fire department, uh, the things that stick out, the staffing levels will remain the same. We have uh, twenty-three uh, budgeted positions, that's seven per platoon plus two administrators or fire marshal and their deputy chief. I also count for half, and we, right now, we have one vacancy that position's being advertised right now. We have uh, actually several people have applied, which is, which is positive. So looking forward to filling uh, those vac, that vacancy and we can move forward. Um, if you see the overtime, I have increased the overtime probably by fifty thousand dollars, we may even need a little bit more. And you ask why, what happened, uh, basically three things, we were short-staffed uh, most of the fiscal year, usually by two firefighters. Uh, we had several, several on duty and off duty related injuries which caused a lot of overtime. And there's also contractual language in the contract in respect to staffing where we have to, you know, have a minimum amount of staffing on the platoon. So that created a lot of overtime, um, you know, it's unfortunate, but that's just the nature of the business. So I increased it by fifty, I hope that will work, it may even be less. So hopefully everyone's back healthy in the next month and uh, we can move forward. Uh, in respect to operating equipment, you'll see a line item there for emergency siren, we have four emergency sirens in town here. One is a newer one, three are older ones, we, we wanna start replacing them one at a time. It's about fifteen thousand dollars a piece, I, so I put one in there. I mean, if we had to cut anything, we, we could eliminate that, we can hold off a year. But I like to start moving on that, I like to have all updated sirens in town here. And um, in respect to uh. Operating equipment, uh, another thing too is, I, I think I put a chest compression machine on there. Uh, the Macomb County Medical Control Board uh, states that if we go to a CPR run, they want us to stay on scene and do CPR for thirty minutes. I don't know if any of you have ever done CPR for thirty minutes, but it's very exhausting, this machine we're looking at getting, it's not cheap. It's about fifteen, seventeen, maybe up to twenty thousand dollars, that does most of the work for you. However, under the American Rescue Funding, we may be able to get funding for that, so that's another thing we can look at. To get funding at if, if you didn't want to approve that. And respect the department vehicles, we have a brand new fire truck, it's being built. Uh, we, hopefully we have that less than a year, that's already been funded. Um, the deputy chief has a vehicle that's currently coming out of the enterprise lease. And we're looking at adding two more uh, additional vehicles, one for the fire marshal, he's driving an older model vehicle, we like to update that. And the battalion chief is driving an older vehicle, we like to update that vehicle and transfer that vehicle as one of the utility vehicles. Um, there's a few capital improvements I'm looking at, I discussed in length with the Deputy Chief Sage. Uh, number one is the sleeping quarters renovation, I don't know if you've ever been to the fire department, but if you go upstairs, it's one big room. Where sometimes five, six, seven people sleep, it's very difficult, it's all open, you can hear people snoring, there's all privacy. Uh, we have no female firefighters, but when we do hire one, you know, you have to have uh, separate quarters for the female firefighter. The shower, they have a shower up there, it's a huge shower, that needs a lot of work. And also the flooring upstairs, it's the same asbestos tile, um, that needs to be replaced. So that's the main three capital improvements. And um, I don't know, Nick, if you can think of anything, but those are the ones that stick out. The rest are just a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there, but these are the main ones that uh, you'll see they're, they're not cheap. But it's very well needed. And that's it for the fire department, the overview, same thing, uh, as a matter of fact, the fire budget is a million dollars. The proposal's a million less than last year, but that's because we're not buying a new truck, so. Think it's a million sixty, million sixty-four thousand less than last year, so.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, well, I'm hoping that the American Recovery Plan Act will pay us back for the overtime due to COVID. Because most of the reasoning is because people got sick that, you know, weren't working here. And they had to be, you know, and overtime had to be, be, be done because they weren't here, hopefully they can pay us back for overtime as well.
Yes.
Any questions, um, Council? Okay. Please.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the fire budget as proposed.
Second.
Oh, I did have uh, one quick item, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, the two new leased vehicles, I just wanna make sure they come in front of council before we do that, so right, we just have the one. One fire vehicle leased right now and you're proposing we lease the other two also.
Two more, yes, sir, when that comes up, I will, I will bring that to council.
Okay, thank you.
So the two we getting rid of, why we can't give that to the code enforcement department? They're paid for.
If you wanna stick your foot off the bottom like Fred Flintstone and stop it, you know. No, they're, they're old, they need to be, they need to, they need to go and uh. You know, our fire marshal needs a little bit more room, his vehicle with all the equipment, and same with our battalion chiefs, they have a lot of equipment they carry in that. In that truck, and we need a, a dependable vehicle, and it, it's, it's time, they have to go.
Well, we have those cars over five years?
Yes, and there'll be auction, we're getting good money right now, the used car market is through the roof right now, we're getting really good money for our used cars.
Okay, uh, Mayor Paul Tim?
Yeah, I do have one comment talking about the, the lease of the vehicles, I, I do wanna say thank you for putting it in the budget. So you know, we're made aware that it's gonna be coming to us ahead of time, so I appreciate that.
Okay, you have motion, it's been second, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you both for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, do you wanna discuss animal control budget, I'm in charge of that too.
You're just in charge of everything.
But if ever, someone wants a review?
It, that is, that's an easy one.
Cuz I know we just hired, we are, we are, the one young lady, she replaced um, Ryan, correct?
Yes, we have a full-time animal control officer, and the only, the only, everything's the same in the line items except. Um, she does have a leased vehicle, uh, we bought that, we released it this year, so that's, it's gonna be a little bit, um. We only had it half the year, so you'll, it'll reflect in full at the next fiscal year. And also, there's a couple um, capital improvements, we, we do have a dog kennel, we are licensed by the Department of Agriculture. It saves us a lot of money that we don't have to pay to the county or, or any other place to house our, our dogs and cats. Uh, we do need some uh, new garage doors on the side of the building, they, they're rusted, they have holes. Um, mice can get in there and rats can get in there, we, we, we cover it the best we can, but we wanna keep running the kennel, we have to replace the doors. And we, they want the, the floor clean, so we're gonna have the floor epoxy, and that's it for capital improvements, the rest remains the same.
What was the increase in expenditures total?
Uh, for animal control, it was um. Eighteen thousand and some change, and, and mainly because the capital improvements and a little bit from.
You said we saved money when we did our own kennel?
We saved probably about ten to fifteen thousand a year by housing our own animals here.
Okay, so kind of.
County, every day we're paying fees and the fee's been cut by probably sixty-five, seventy percent.
Okay, so we pretty much balanced out even more, the only reason it's that high is because of the capital improvement.
It's about, it's a, it's a wash almost.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll motion to approve the animal control budget.
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, um, it's irrelevant, but I had a deer in my backyard a few years ago, we didn't have animal control. So there wasn't anything that they can do about this deer that was in my backyard.
Typically, we don't, uh, any kind of wild animals, uh, opossums, bats in your attic, squirrels, we have numbers. You will call the number, matter of fact, we're in the process of developing literature for residents, it'll be a brochure, we'll have all the numbers. You have an opossum, you have bats, you have a deer, here's all the numbers, here's what you do to vaccinate your animals, license your animals. So it's all gonna be in a brochure, we're working on it.
Great, that's great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a motion on the floor, did we have anybody second that? I didn't hear it. Okay, you did, okay, please. Okay, you did. Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes. That's it, Director. Any more?
I have one more. Drug forfeiture budget.
Okay.
This, same thing, easy. Basically, the, the only thing I can tell you is the money continues to grow in our fund. And the main thing that we're paying for out of this fund right now will be all the leased cars that are assigned to the police department, which equates to over a hundred thousand dollars per year. And really, there's nothing. I'm, I'm going to take some overtime out of that budget to pay for some of the officers assigned. And other than that, our revenue is going to the revel, the revenue be a lot greater than the expenditure. So I'm not even concerned about this account. But I just want you to know what's coming out of there for equipment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Council on that? Okay.
No. I'll motion to approve that drug forfeiture fund.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. You're down, Director.
That's it, Mayor.
No, thank you. Okay, next item is DPW, Rose, Water and Sewer. We have our director. There you go, Mr. Darren Palucci. How are you?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm good. Thank you.
Did I say the last name right? I'm always nervous saying your name. I always try to be formal and not do Darren, but I said Palucci, so I did right.
So it's always nice to follow such a Caesar and veteran. Like the, like the library director, I have only been in this seat for six weeks, although I've been with the city for sixteen years.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
A little overview. Here at the DPW, we maintain all major and local roads, water, sewer, make motor pool. We oversee parks and rec. We do building maintenance and we do much of that building maintenance in-house. We, we do all of this with one director, two supervisors, ten union labors, one clerk, and five part-time labors. So that means right now we are currently at full staff. But that is always changing, always changing. So the budget that is before you are projects to improve our infrastructure that we prioritize with A W on. There are currently thirteen projects in our current budget, and they've all been brought to City Council for approval. The only other capital improvements that haven't been in front of you would really just be the purchase of three pickup trucks that we need here because the old ones are, are getting old and outdated and need to be brought to auction. That's what I have.
Council? No questions for our director? Let's move right along.
I think I just mainly had water sewer rate questions, but I think we're going to talk about that at a different time, or are we talking about that right now?
Yeah, we can do, we can do all that. So we're, I mean, are we doing a separate DPW and then are we going to do all of it as one? Because they put it all as one. So when we, so we want to finish it out and go ahead and go into water? Because we just talked about DPW and Rose. We're going to go right into the water, Councilman? Or Ms. Lucino?
Approving each area. So I mean, if you want to continue, I can, you know, each area in the budget, the way it's done, so I can approve them separately and.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. That's what I thought we were doing. I know, um, we're going to get there, Councilman, to water. I know you're just saying.
I just wanted to make sure to miss my chance.
Um, we're going to talk about water and sewer. I will motion to approve the Department of Public Works and Service budget as presented in.
Motion and support. Call the roll. Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Next is Rose. We're still with you, Director.
Yes.
Yes.
Again, I put everything together to be honest with you, the DPW and roads, because I considered all one. And I know that we separated here, but the roads again are just infrastructure improvements that we collaborate with A W on. And they've all been brought to City Council for approval.
Any questions on Rose?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. You were on the roll.
I will motion to approve major and local streets.
Motion and support. Please call the roll. Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
You're on water and sewer. I'm gonna let you start and then I'm, uh, immediately go right to Councilman DeMonaco after you.
Oh, good.
Director Palucci.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, did you want to say something? Mayor Proton, I think you raised your hand.
Yeah, I did. I was just going to ask one question, too. So the other department that I'm interested in discussing tonight is parks and it's not on our agenda. So I didn't know we'd be discussing that under F. I wasn't sure we're misdoing, or if we wanted to talk about it under City Manager.
Arc should be considered part of DPW. It's all, it was based on Director. So Parks is under Darren. That'd be under Darren, things like that.
So, yeah, Mayor Owens, if you can just add Parks after Water and Sewer, so we can make sure we have that discussion, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Director Palucci.
Okay, again, the Water and Sewer are infrastructure projects that have gone, all gone through A W and then brought to City Council for approval. You know that right now we're replacing over two hundred deadlines throughout the city and a water main project that's right around a three million dollar cost.
Hey, Councilman DeMonaco.
So, yeah, can we just review? Maybe I think Mr. Blum probably has these numbers. I asked for some information that was, should be in everyone's email about, I was asking about like the GLWA costs and SMSD costs and I was just looking at these rates. I was just curious as to, I guess, basically just how we came about these uh, this increase. We have a four point five percent overall water sewer increase. And if we could touch on that for a second?
Yes, um, Director Blum, please.
Yep. Otis, could you do the screen share at this point? I'd like to pop the schedule up and kind of walk through it.
Should be able to go now, Randy.
All right. So hold on. Get that. All right, that's up. All right. So hey, look at that. It worked. Okay. This was sent out to council this afternoon. You may not have seen it, though, and the public probably should get a peek at it. The way we develop water sewer rates is just based on the expenditures that are projected and what we need to cover those costs. We get projections from GLWA of what they're going to sell us. And they do that based on history and run rates and all that. We factor in a water loss. We've been using twelve and a half percent the last four budget years. So basically, what we're looking at is selling nine hundred and ten thousand million cubic feet to the residents. And based on that sales assumption is what then drives the rates. The purchase of water from GLWA you can see is projected at a million six forty-six. But then there's an additional cost of operations of almost two point seven. That is the cost of the personnel to that fix the water main breaks that go out and do all the work, everything not related to buying water. So water operations runs this budget year is projected at four point three million dollars. Based on the water rate that is presented to you, that would generate an operational overage of fifty-five thousand dollars. So it's very tight rate versus expenditure. On the sewer side, we pay san- the sanitary district. This year it's projected at six point eight million. Then there's additional operation cost, again, people-related, catch, basin repair, things like that, that are sewer-related. That's another one point six, total of eight point four million on sewer. The sewer rate that's presented would generate only an eighty-seven hundred dollar surplus in that. Additionally, this year, we are getting a rebate from the sanitary district of five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If you recall, when we did the rate study, the target for a operational cushion was, at the time, it was two and a half million. It was actually supposed to be twenty-five percent of operating cost. Two, two and a half million is less than twenty percent at this point. But we're trying to build the reserves in the water sewer fund up to two and a half million. So effectively, I'm using the sanitary district rebate to help build the fund because the rates are not producing any extra revenue at this point. It really is designed this year to just cover cost and use the rebate to build up the reserve. Uh, the second page is the capital expenditure. That's where the ready-to-serv charge generates about almost four point three million a year. That's used for capital projects. We've been rather light on the projects the last few years. So we're playing catch-up this year and next with the various projects. We look for about a two million dollar cushion for the projects. And even after all the money we're projected to spend in fiscal year twenty-two, we'll still have over one point eight million of a cushion there. So we're in good shape on the capital side. The water sewer rate, that's always the, the kicker. The less people buy, the higher the rates have to be to cover the cost. Um, so it's, and the higher the rates are, the less people use it. It's kind of one of those problems that you run into. But the, the overall rate increase is four point five this year. So unless, uh, I mean, I, I guess we'll go to specific questions at this point.
Councilman DeMonaco?
Uh, sure. Mayor, I, I guess the, well, the biggest thing that sticks out to me is the fifty cent increase for the water rate. I'm trying to figure out how that was determined.
Well, a- again, that was what's needed to cover the cost. If you recall, last year I was projecting a three and a half percent, yeah, three and a half percent increase. And council reduced it down to two percent. And we're losing about eight hundred thousand dollars this year in the operation of the water sewer system. So every time we don't cover the cost, it gets, it's going to get factored into the following year.
So I think we, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It, I don't know if this was the exact same line item we even discussed last year. Like pavement repairs, right, would be part of water. We, it seems like we've budgeted a ridiculous amount again, like activity in nineteen twenties, thirty-eight thousand. Activity so far this year, seventeen. We budgeted six hundred thousand for some reason. And now we've budgeted four hundred thousand when, you know, it looks like maximum in the last two years was thirty-eight thousand. I, I don't understand that line item. I think we discussed this one last year, too.
Yeah, and we've had some timing issues with the contractor doing the work. There will be a large bill coming in here before June thirtieth that will be reflected in this year's activity when it's all said and done. But the contractor did not get to the work before June thirtieth of last year.
Well, and didn't we, well, I mean, wasn't this year a, an exception? Also, we had that one issue that broke like twenty different water mains, right? Like twenty different parts of water mains at least. So, and, and that would directly affect what you're talking about, right? The pavement repairs then for the water.
Yep. No.
So I mean, even in this year where we had an extreme amount, I mean, what kind of bill are you talking? You're talking a three hundred thousand dollar bill. That, that seems crazy.
Not for concrete, but I'll let Darren answer that one. I know we've got a pretty large one that's pending because they're in doing all the miscellaneous street and miscellaneous repairs right now. So go ahead, Darren.
Well, we, we haven't seen one invoice yet. So it is a bit scary. There were over a hundred and twenty locations to repair cement. Now, those weren't all water main breaks. Those were also slap repairs and, and private contractors' cement repairs. So unfortunately, I have not seen one invoice yet from that.
Well, I think, well, I guess, well, so this line item I'm talking about, I guess, what would apply? You know, I'm like on page fifty-three in the line item. You know, in the last column, it's four hundred thousand, that line item.
Yeah.
I've seen a lot of bills, though, come through in our payroll and bills, or what I assumed was a lot of that work when we had all those water main breaks at once. You know, I saw, I think, like City of Roseville, a couple contractors, other contractors I think we don't typically use, right? Because we had to call in a, probably a lot of people to fix all those breaks. Or am I mistaken?
No, that would be the, the contractor work for the repairs, but that would not go to the con- there's a concrete line, and then there's a contractor line.
Oh, okay. So I, well, I guess then, just in general, then, it isn't four hundred thousand super, super, super high then, in that line item, I guess, is my end question.
I mean, the, the six hundred thousand was based on a run rate. It had been a little high, which is why we brought it down to four hundred thousand. I, I think by the end of, you know, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, we're not going to be that far under budget. I mean, we'll probably be under the six hundred thousand, but probably closer to that four hundred thousand we're budgeting for the next fiscal year.
So we're at seventeen right now, and you're going to say we, we could get to four hundred thousand in these last two months?
Oh, yeah.
For that line.
The contractor doesn't come in until May. They have to wait till, you know, the frost freeze and all that. So they do the work in May and June. Last year, they had an issue that they didn't get started due to COVID. They came in over the summer. They must not have done any water sewer work, because it seems to be all miscellaneous street that came in. But they did a lot of work in the fall on, uh, street repairs. So we, we got a fairly hefty bill in like September, October. Um, and there, there will be another one, because they're in town working right now.
You have the floor, Councilman. I'm waiting on you. I don't want to stop you. Anybody else have any questions? Why Councilman DeMonaco is finding another one? Which is a good thing. It's a good thing.
So you're proposing to raise the water rate twelve percent? I mean, four point five over?
Overall. Yep.
Overall, but it's twelve percent increase in the water, correct?
That, that sounds about right.
GLWA's increase was two percent, was it this year?
I think that's right. I think they do an increase every year.
Yep. Two percent. Yep. But again, that's just a small portion of the cost of, of the water operations. We're seeing an increase in.
No, I understand.
Yeah. And part, part of that, too, is
I, I figured out.
And stuff like that.
The number in the deficit was eight percent to make up what we, for shortfall last year was, would be eight percent in water. And then if you add the two, that'd be ten percent, so.
Director? So was it, was the question, um, with the director of Mayor Proton?
I didn't have a question. He answered my question. I just wanted to, I was just asking all the GLW. I'm just trying to do some out here.
Okay. Councilman DeMonaco, are we direct- Councilman De Monica, are we directing back at you? Are you asked all your question?
I just, I, I mean, for like, what, three years in a row, I basically voted no on the budget because these water rates, we just increased so high, especially compared to other cities when GLWA charges us less for being closer to Detroit and things like that. And I know, like we're saying, there's more water operations. I just don't understand how we keep, you know, we we increased by thirty five percent just a few years ago. And then it seems like every year we're still asking for an increase above inflation, you know, like well, you know, well above. It just it's not making sense. And and you're saying, I guess, these the cash balances here, I'm trying to because we talked about twenty five to thirty, right, when we had AEW with us, and you're saying two and a half million there, and then the further down, there was another the other number. That's the twenty five to thirty percent target.
Twenty five to thirty was for water sewer operations, which is this top part. The the two and a half million here is actually less than twenty percent of the expenditures. If we were doing a twenty five percent target, it'd be about three point one million. And right now, even with all this projection, we'd only end up at a million four fifty two. So.
So if we, this this includes, then, I guess, the MTU changes, right?
The MTUs are part of capital. That's down here. It's part of the seven point five million.
But it'd affect that last two million target, then?
Yes, yep.
So, yeah, so we'd have like four point eight because that was like almost three million dollars, right? Okay. I just, I I don't know, the math just does not add up to me.
I know, excuse me, Councilman Monica, I know when I talked to the director, he was saying the reason why because I asked the same question, you know, I think we are a number trying to figure out these numbers. But you were saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that since our city is so small, it's so old, and we have a certain amount of, you know, homeowners with that tax revenue. We have to increase it based on the level of, you know, tax ownership, the taxes that we get since it's so small and trying to put it split it up with a resident. That's why the increase is so high compared to other cities that are bigger. It can be spread it less, a little bit less because there's more residents there. Is that, did I explain?
I'm just saying, just with just with regard to the GLWA costs, they charge cities closer to them less. There's like three different variables or something that apply to the overall algorithm. I don't know. I'm sure Mr. Blum is very familiar, but I I'm just saying compared to like very northern Macomb County cities, we should be getting a nice water rate. But it seems like still we've got a you know, higher water rate. You know, I did a comparison a couple of years ago, and when we did those increases, basically, Frazier was the only nearby city that had a higher water rate than us. So I'm guessing that's still the case then, since we've still increased a bit since since that large increase. It just seems like we should be able to knock it down a bit.
Yeah, and and again, the water cost is a fairly small portion of this overall rate. You know, it's it's the cost of maintaining an old system on the water mains. It's the cost down here of sewer that is a fixed charge out of the sanitary district. And then, of course, then the cost of maintaining the sewer system itself. The the water is, I wouldn't say is minimal, but it is the one of the smaller numbers in the overall scheme of rate building. And we don't, we have our twelve thousand five hundred properties that we spread our cost over. It'd be different if you had, I mean, I live in Clinton Township. My water rates aren't that much less expensive because I have more fixed fees. So the unit rate might be a little bit less, but my standard bill costs more up to about ten units of water than an East Point bill does. Because of all my fixed charges. And so every community handles these things different. And you can't really do a rate for rate comparison if you don't look at a total bill.
Oh, I did. I know you got a five, five unit minimum, I remember, for Clinton Township. Like on your personal bill. I mean, I did a I, you know, I took off refuse and all that and it's close to an apples to apples comparison of bills.
I know we are high, and we absolutely are. I, you know, there's no argument there, and it's part of being an older, smaller community.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So how, out of the four percent increase that you're proposing, what percentage of that would you expect to be going into the the fund balance? Like, if we wanted to keep our fund balance exactly where it's at, have no losses, not add anything extra, what would be your proposed percentage increase?
With the four point five percent increase, operationally, it's going to generate sixty three thousand dollars for the fund balance. For every ninety one thousand dollars, I can reduce the rate a penny. So I can't even reduce it a full penny to and stay at a break even. I mean, that that's how tight these rates are this year.
Well, that's what I wanted, because I mean, I, I don't know, I didn't, my estimate was just a little bit lower than the four point five, so.
Well, and I guess I just don't understand, like, water operations back in FY fifteen sixteen. You know, we're even considerably higher than now, too. And I mean, it's wildly gone up and down. I have a feeling I know the problem of those couple of years, but but how?
That was big concrete.
Yes, it was. So I, yeah, I don't know, I just don't don't get that. So how much are we adding then? So where's, can you point out like what Councilman Lucido was saying? Where is last year's, like, yeah, where were the funds at last year for like those target lines?
So, yeah, down down here, you see the cash balance. So we started at a million six fifty five. The current budgeted rates is going to lose eight hundred and forty one thousand, dropping it to eight thirteen. And then this year, only because of the sanitary district rebate, it's going to go up six hundred and thirty eight thousand and bring it up to a million four fifty two. I mean, you see last year's rates, we we lost three hundred and fifty six thousand. This year it'll be a positive fifty five. And last year sewer rates lost four hundred and eighty four thousand, and this year it's eighty seven hundred positive.
Now, with the rebate, you said that's just a fund that we're just sitting on for savings, correct?
Trying to get to the two and a half million dollar target, yep.
But we didn't even expect to get that funding.
Correct.
So.
If we hadn't got it, I'd be asking for a higher rate increase. Because I would have been trying to build the fund balance back up.
What what rate increase would you have asked for? Because last year you asked for the similar fund increase without that over half a million dollars right there. So if we use that, what we didn't expect to have, we can keep it at the same rate. Your turn, director. You were last last budget, you wanted at what you're asking for now. And so we didn't have that, you know, to that SMSD rebate.
Right.
And then you were going to also ask for it this year without knowing who was going to get that rebate. So since we got the rebate and it's cutting costs that we didn't expect, can we leave it as is?
We might have to go back and calculate it. A zero increase. You you want to use the rebate to keep the rates flat? Is that what?
I mean, it's the idea. I'm just saying, I don't know. You're the finance director, so I don't know if that's the best thing, and I don't know what council feels. I'm just saying it's money that we didn't even know we we were, we had. So since it's money that we didn't know we had, we can use that you know, to minus some of the costs that you were saying that we that were upcoming. So we don't have to go up on the rate.
If if I'm not mistaken, that a half a million that we're getting refunded, I think it'd only be about to about a half a percent, correct?
Well, let me, let me do something real quick here.
Yeah.
Well, or if I could ask it a different way, I mean, the that rebate, though, is essentially a rebate, I think, right, for like five or ten years worth of rates or something that we paid, we just overpaid over like a long period of time, right? So.
They had it, yeah, they had it just sitting in the fund and it was going to sit there until we say, can we use that money? And they, you know, turned it over. I don't know how long it was sitting there. I don't think it was for ten years. I have to get the director of SMSD on a line to ask that. Well, you know, Director Blum would know, but I don't know if it was sitting there for, you know. I didn't hear.
Yeah, we we got a rebate in two thousand ten or eleven, somewhere in there.
Okay.
So the the rebate, if it was put into the water rates, would be sixty three cents a unit is what it equates to. I'm my rate or unit increase is fifty seven cents. So in theory, yes, we could keep the rates flat, use the rebate to cover the cost and not increase the cash balance.
Okay.
But, yeah, that, you know, that next year rolls around, the the costs go up, and we're still trying to hit that target number.
The reason I said that, too, is because when I spoke with you, we are not going to really make any interest off the money. So I mean, I would like to save money if we make an interest. We're not making but a couple thousand off of it. So
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just saying, use this because during the COVID, you know, the increase on water for right now, you know, is going to be a lot on people. And I know as a city, we still have to run. But if we got this rebate and didn't know we had it, I think it would be I think it's a blessing that we have it to give our residents a break. And but that, again, that's just the idea. That's something I'll have to think about.
That that's what the city did in the past, which led to the thirty six percent increase in twenty eighteen is we were increasing the rates less than necessary, hoping the expenses would go down in the future. And I mean,
Well, I'd argue, I'd argue we spent way too much money.
Well, I'll concur on the concrete portion, but the costs are going up anyways.
I do have one question, so I don't know how the council would feel about this. I like the mayor's idea of using that money to kind of help offset some of the costs. But I think that in having like a minimal rate increase, at least with inflation, like the two percent that GLWA is proposing might be a good idea, just so next year maybe we don't have to raise four percent. We can stick to like a two. Because I just think like doing a smaller increase every year is easier for people to budget than having like a large increase where people aren't expecting it.
We're at two, we are at two and a half right now, right? And you were asking for four and a half? Or we're at three?
Four and a half is what's in the budget.
Well, we, where where are we right now?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, we could ask for two, a two percent increase and, you know, lower it to from four and a half to two. I don't know how the rest of the council would feel about that. And then that would just help, it would cover the, you know, sewer rate increase, which is minimal and a little bit extra to put in that fund balance for water. So hopefully, we don't have to come back with as large of a request next year.
No, I guess I was asking, where are we? I'm looking, where are we before the increase? What what percentage we're at now before even asking for the two percent increase? We're at two and a half?
Now, what what is in, what's in the budget is four and a half percent increase.
That's what you're asking for. What are, what are, what are, what are our residents paying right now? Blah, 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 blah. What are they paying right now?
Well, they're they're paying the combined unit rate of twelve dollars and seventy seven cents.
Okay, what percentage is that?
It, I mean, it just, it is, it's not a percentage.
No, we're talking about increase. You asked for an increase last year. What did we decide on last year? I'm just trying to get all these numbers together.
Last year, I had budgeted three and a half, council approved two. This twelve seven seven reflects that two percent increase that council approved. The thirteen thirty four total unit rate reflects the four and a half that I've requested.
Okay, so you were talking about doing two? Councilwoman Lucido?
That was my recommendation, just to kind of offset some of those, you know, costs. We don't have to raise it as much next year.
I guess I have one more question maybe before I can comment on what you're saying, Councilman Lucido. How much do we know, like, overall, for the water and sewer operations? Like, what what did that one incident cost overall? Because I'm assuming that's probably a big chunk of the losses from FY twenty one, then, when we had that, all those water main breaks. I think that was like, it was super expensive, right? Like it could, I guess, because I I'm asking because if we're trying to build the reserve, but we're basing it off of kind of off last year and some losses last year, we wouldn't we should, you know, hopefully not expect any of those, you know, in the next, you know, foreseeable future years.
The the fiscal year twenty one number is the current budget, which has not been adjusted for those breaks. So it
Oh, so it
It's gonna, it's gonna be worse. We're just hoping that, you know, maybe some of the other expenses come in lower.
Then what were all those? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, those happened after the budget was set, and we've never adjusted for them because we're waiting to see where everything comes in.
Oh, so this is in, I thought that column would have been the activity. Oh, well, I guess that wouldn't make sense. Yeah, I got you. Okay, okay.
So once we go up that two percent, that'd be, they'd be at four percent. And can you show us how it looks with the two percent increase with minus the rebate? And how it will look with the the rebate and just one up one percent?
Well.
Or one and a half, can you do one and a half?
Two percent would give you a thirteen oh three total. How it gets allocated could be any way you want it to be. So you know, I I would probably take it out of the water since that's the biggest increase area.
So Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you. I I listened to all of this and tried to figure all this stuff in my head with all these figures, but I I do agree with Sarah, reducing that recommendation from four and a half down to two. I think I think we can, I think we can live with that, and I think I think the figures will come out all right. So I would, I would agree with Sarah to make that a two percent increase instead of four and a half.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it okay if I make a motion and if I don't get support or it doesn't pass?
Well, I want to see what other the other council, council would like to say. As far as what did they propose as well? Because I was thinking, because you said the sewer rate as far as the, I'm sorry, the SMSD rebate. And and in addition to that, is it two percent? Is that what you're saying? Councilwoman Lucido, was that what you're proposing? Oh, you didn't do it at two percent?
Well, Mr., with the numbers that Mr. Blum figured out, with, we used the money from SMSD to offset the water rate increase. I think it would be about a percent only would have to increase to be even. What I was proposing is a two percent increase. So next year, if the rates go up, we don't have to increase them a lot all at once because we'll be able to put some of that money in reserve. So like one, the one percent would cover the cost, the difference with using our refund, and then the other percent would kind of go into our reserve because we're trying to build it up to two and a half million. That's why I proposed two percent. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Council, any other suggestions? I like that we can use the rebate. I like that we can use uh the rebate. And um.
Yeah, using your re- using that rebate would help going from the four and a half that was proposed to us and bringing.
Right, and then additional two percent.
We'll still be putting some money in the fund. It just won't be the whole five hundred thousand. It would be closer to probably about a hundred twenty-five thousand, but at least we're not, you know, it's giving us a little bit of a cushion if we do two percent.
Or we can do half of the rebate and savings. But the savings to me, again, we're not gaining any interest. And I hate saving money that you don't gain interest on. If it doesn't make money, it don't make sense. Um, that's why I hate it, I just hate it sitting there. But I'm saying, even if we did half of the rebate and then increased it to one and a half percent.
If you used half of the rebate, then the increase would be about two and a half percent, yes.
Yeah, use half of the rebate and do um a one and a half percent increase. Because again, I was just saying, we we didn't know this was coming. And we were still, yes, ma'am.
I believe Mr. Blum might be able to figure these numbers out. I might be wrong. But I think if we used only half of the rebate, the increase would be two and a half percent. To be even.
You wanna go um try your motion?
Am I right, Mr. Blum?
May I speak, Madam Mayor?
Yes, yeah, um, I don't know if the Councilwoman Lucido asked Mr. Blum a question and you're about to talk? No? If not, Councilwoman Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um. I do believe that our water bills are very extremely high. Uh, I know that we do have a surcharge from not being in the city of Detroit, and they definitely have the surcharge on that. But I am uh also in favor of not having money sit. Because one thing is this, if we're having money sit that's not generating any extra money um or any interest or anything like that, why couldn't we have that money sit in our own accounts versus sitting it in a city account? Um, with an increase, um, I believe that we definitely should use to rebate, because with an increase to have the money sit, uh, I would prefer for it to sit in my own account instead of just having it sit in the city's account and paying extra money that is not targeted or needed at this point.
The the um targeted cash balance is not for investment purposes. It's to be able to pay the bills while we wait for people to pay their bills. We uh as a general rule, we're rolling about two million dollars of delinquent water on the taxes twice a year. So the city has to cover the the cost of that. Basically, we don't have that cash until it goes delinquent onto taxes and people pay their taxes. Um, and that's the purpose of the cushion. It's not for investment. Um, so the interest rate is almost irrelevant to the conversation. Um, that's just so we can pay our bills until we collect the delinquents. If if everybody paid their bill every month in full, uh, we probably could get away with a a half million dollar cash balance. But people don't do that.
Even when people don't do it, we we get um, they get late fees, so we make money off that.
We we do, which actually keeps the rates lower than they would be if if we didn't have late fees. But I have to look at the cash flow, because we still have to pay our bills whether people pay their water bills or not. But that that's the purpose of that targeted uh balance, is for us to be able to pay our vendors while we wait for residents and businesses to pay us.
Just have one point, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so then, once the money do come in, then what happens?
Uh, well, that then we're good until, you know, the the next six months when people don't pay again. And we we have this ongoing outstanding receivable that um the only time it ever drops is when we roll it onto taxes. So every July and every December, delinquent water goes on taxes and we start collecting that money again. But in the meantime, we're still paying our bills. Uh, we don't hold our vendors up just because the resident hasn't paid their bill.
Just have one quick piece of information. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so once the money come in, you're just caught up from where you you were before. And then, and then it, and then it goes behind again.
Yep.
And then the next come in, and then you're caught up again.
Correct.
So at this point, are we in a negative or are we caught up?
Uh, right now, today, I would say we're pretty close to zero, because we're about ready to roll delinquents on the taxes again.
Okay, so if we're pretty close to zero, we're not in the negative. Once you roll it on the taxes, that money will come in.
Correct.
And once that money come in, then we'll be in a surplus for a moment and so people don't pay their bills again.
Yeah.
What what I'm trying to get at is if it does come in and and we're not in a negative, then why do we need to add more at this time?
Um, well, because we have large bills that come in, the the timing of bills aren't perfect with the timing of delinquent water. I mean, even though we put it on taxes, we collect most of it in August and September. You know, we still have to pay the bills in May, June, July until that money shows up. And that, again, that's the whole point of this targeted uh operational cushion.
I think we should go with the, that's my idea, use the rebate and do a one point one and a half percent increase. I mean, going, you just said, we have a lot, you know, we have people that have delinquent and we have people that um owe us money now. So going higher in the uh cost, I don't see them paying any faster. Because we're still going, we're still using the rebate and then we're still going up uh one and a half percent.
The one piece of mayor, the, I just have one very quick piece of information I was just gonna share about last year's budget.
Okay.
Um, uh, Mr. Blum, you proposed eight point three percent combined increase and we.
Was it? Okay.
Two last year, so I just wanted everyone to have that in their head.
It was that high? Wow, I don't remember. Oh, wow.
Well, it was, he proposed eight point three. We voted on two percent after.
So, um, Madam Mayor, I mean, I I would. I'm just worried, I, my biggest concern with only doing one and a half, and I know it's only a half a percent difference, is I don't want to end up having to do a four percent increase next year. Like, I'd rather try to keep it more minimal at around two percent, because I just know that a lot of people are on fixed budgets. And a smaller increase per year is easier for a lot of them to manage than like a larger rate increase in one year. So I like your idea of using the money, like you said, um, that we got, you know, for the, from the sanitary district. But to just still build up that fund a little bit, so hopefully next year, we don't end up having to have a large. So I would still, I would still feel better sticking at the two percent. And um, I I will make, I'll actually make a motion um to approve the water and sewer budget, with the exception of changing the rate increase from from four point five percent to two percent.
And I'm gonna, I'm I'm gonna support that.
Motion and support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Moore?
Um, one moment. No, I think it should be lower.
Mayor Owen?
No. Okay, we're gonna go, go work uh council on that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Really quick, is there any way we can take like a ten or fifteen minute break? We're two hours in, I know.
Oh, yeah, let's do a a a five minute break. I had a a long day today, so let's do five minutes. And um let's come back at um, what time is it? Eight oh five, you all? And if you guys come before that, then we can continue.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Six minutes, right?
And stay tuned, uh, residents and guests, please. Here we're back. And so um we are on parks. Is Mr. Director Palucci? Okay, there you are. We're gonna go into um parks now, Mr. Palucci. I think, Ms. Lucido, what kind of questions, did you, did you have any questions that you want to?
So I just bring, yeah, I was talking, thank you, Madam Mayor, for remembering parks. Um, I wanted to bring up the fact that uh the the basketball courts and some of the minor improvements in the parks were budgeted for next fiscal year and not for this coming up fiscal year. And I was wondering what the reason for that was.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that answer, so that may have to go to Randy as well.
Yeah, the the answer is that we, again, we budgeted, came up with a one point seven million dollar deficit and stopped. Um, we kind of figured we have, again, the conversation tonight. If council wants to add in um a hundred or whatever the basketball courts are gonna be, we can do that. Um, we just didn't feel it was appropriate with the the deficit that was in the current budget.
So, I mean, I agree. I mean, I I don't want to have a huge deficit either, but we're still gonna have a deficit next year. Um, if we do it next year, if we do it this year. So moving forward, I would prefer doing it now, because this is something that we've talked about for years. The Parks Commission agreed. Um, they made a timeline on different things as they realized, obviously, everything couldn't be done at once. And they thought the basketball court should be a priority, because council had approved that, and um so did they. And like I said, I I would hate not, right now, I don't think we have anything budgeted this year for the parks. And we are always like putting them on the back burner, board burner. We agreed to use the revenue from the cell towers towards parks. So just using that money alone should cover the costs of those basketball courts.
Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, we 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 talked about this at length with a lot of excitement when what was brought up and we voted to to do the basketball court. And to delay it another year is just to delay something that should have been, should have been brought back decades ago. Right after it was, excuse me, eliminated. So I would, I would hope that we agree to, uh, we really need to get this thing started.
Director, how much was the total for the basketball? Um, hoops, whatever.
A hundred K in the capital improvement budget?
Now, um, the towers, the tower should somewhat pay for some of that, Director. How much does the towers um being there pay for that?
Um, we, yeah. And uh leases, where are you? Antenna leases bring in a hundred and fifty thousand a year. I don't have a number specific to parks, but um, I mean, even if half of it was parks, you got seventy-five thousand of that.
So Madam Mayor? Well, my other, my other concern was too, was the softball fencing, which is the cost is only seven thousand dollars. That softball fencing is in really poor shape, and I'm worried it's almost like to a point where it could be like a hazard. Um, and there's a lot of other safety improvements. We have an estimate of like sixty-three thousand dollars in other like safety improvements. And even if we weren't able to do all of those safety improvements, maybe if we could at least start making some progress on those, I would, I would like to at least put like maybe a hundred twenty thousand in parks this year. Putting basketball courts and the softball fencing as a priority, and then anything left, maybe starting making some of these safety improvements that have been um uh found by the Parks Commission.
Should I just propose that we just shift the whole thing over a year, um, the whole entire parks area? Everything fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, just push it over to twenty-one, twenty-two and shift. Because I think, I agree with everyone that spoke so far. And actually, I think one other thing I was gonna bring up, this might help with our budget deficit. But I think the numbers that for revenue sharing, I think you have a larger decrease than the last update I saw on the state website. Think you had like a, I don't know, I don't, didn't have it in front of me, but I think it's only like a one point seven percent decrease in this latest update. So maybe the deficit won't be as bad, uh, because I think in the budget, you said like seven or eight percent, I wanna say. That's true, so that would help offset this. And I think you're muted, Randy.
Yeah, my my revenue share numbers are based on what was available back in March, always third of the budget. So if they've changed, um, I I haven't seen any updated ones, because I haven't looked for them, so.
Yeah.
Um, any other um suggestions? Sounds like you got a motion that you wanna put the um the basketball and things like that, um, at that as as an addition, correct? And also those safety features.
So, Mia, I can make that motion. I can make the motion to um add to the parks budget, the basketball courts, softball fencing and safety improvements of a total of approximately a hundred seventy thousand to the budget.
Support.
Motion and support. No more conversation. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember D'Amico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. I think you're done, Director Palucci, if you wanna stay. It's up to you. I know you got a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm definitely gonna stay.
Okay. I have item G, finance and assessing, Director. You have the floor.
Yep, okay, um, so finance, uh, we have status quo on our staffing. Um, most of the uh other line items are flat year over year. Uh, this is one area where you'll see a large drop, because the um, the pension moved up to the citywide department. Um, so it went from a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar budget down to zero. But most of the the line items are flat, uh, maybe slightly up, slightly down. But it's pretty much just a a carryover budget, less the uh, the retirement. And the assessing, uh, the biggest item there is the contractual item, which goes up at two percent. Contractually goes up two percent per year. Um, and then all of the other line items are uh consistent year over year. There's not a whole lot there. Um, and those are the two, two departments that I'm in charge of. There's a whole bunch of other departments that we do need to talk about, but they can wait till after the uh city manager portion. Um, unless you wanna talk about them now. That's, that's your call.
We can, gotta talk about it anyway, so we gotta come back to you. Might as well get all out the way.
Well, any, any questions on those two departments?
Oh, in assessing, you, you're doing assessing too? You're covering assessing too?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, uh, yes, ma'am.
No, I was just gonna say, before we move on to the other areas, if I'll make a motion to do those two first, if you'd like.
Um, before, does anybody have any questions for the director? I know Councilmember D'Amico brung up, you know, the the sharing. The revenue sharing, yes, the revenue sharing. You got the answer for that, correct?
Uh, yeah, I think you you had five point one percent. I think I just found, um, and I think the latest uh spreadsheet here I had from the state, it says like projected is like one point seven percent decrease. I think, I think this is the same, probably PDF, if you get off the state's, that's not gonna show up, is it? Because it's not a human.
Right.
My screen.
You have to be on earth, that's why.
So hopefully that helps. I guess that's all I was pointing out. Hopefully it offsets the uh, deficit a little bit.
Any other questions on this part of it? Okay, yes, ma'am.
So I'll motion to approve um the Finance Department and the Assessing Department in the budget as presented.
Board.
Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes, yes.
Number Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Director, you still have the mic.
Um, couple more departments, uh, one oh one, two nine five is the Insurance Department that handles the um general employees that are not public safety. Uh, it has the retiree healthcare costs for them, and then there's some uh workers comp and general liability expenses. There is a slight decrease in that fund uh, as there's less uh, general employees that are uh, getting the retiree healthcare. Um, so it drops from seven hundred and forty-five thousand to six hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Um, after that is Department one oh one, two nine nine, which is kind of a City Hall, Citywide, anything specific to a department. Um, this is where you see the large increase in retirement going from a hundred and eighty-two thousand up to nine hundred and seven thousand. So that's all of the pieces that were allocated out to the other departments in prior years has been moved here. The majority of the other line items are um fairly consistent. The one big change is that we um, had a part-time custodian who is now gonna be under the contractual as we uh, went out and did that, so you see an increase in custodial cost of thirty thousand six hundred. From zero up to that, uh, you see the utilities and communications, that's all City Hall related. Building and site maintenance is all City Hall, and then of course, the uh, the debt payments on the City Hall bond payment. Um, so that particular department sees, uh, it goes from seven hundred and forty-three thousand to a million five oh six. Uh, but again, most of that is related to the change in how we do the pension. Uh, we already did parks now, um if you wanna hit some of the other funds, if you go down to Fund two nineteen, that's the street lighting fund. Uh, we still have our special assessment in place. We have our electric bills. Uh, that fund has been in a deficit this year, is when it will come out of a deficit, and we will have um, some money available for additional street lighting. Uh, we don't have anything projected as far as any capital activities cuz we have not identified it yet, but it, the funds will be available uh, at the appropriate time. Uh, actually, I wanna pause. If you guys wanna make a motion on the last two general uh, departments, and then we can just be done with General Fund.
We did, and I think you went to Insurance, and what was the other one?
Uh, the Insurance and the Citywide.
Okay, we're gonna do Insurance. Those are two different things. Let's do Insurance first and then the second one.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the insurance. Can I just, okay, oh yeah, um, Insurance Fund that's presented in the budget.
Support.
Motion is supported. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
And what was the second one?
The Citywide.
Okay, thank you. Citywide.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve the of the Citywide Department in the budget.
Motion is supported. Call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, um, Director.
Okay, um, and then uh, while we're talking about the street lighting fund, that will generate some uh, extra, or not extra, but it will generate uh, more revenue than expenditures until we identify some street projects. Uh, we will have about a hundred and twenty-three thousand available for those projects. Uh, we're actually kind of expecting that some of that may be tied in with a nine-mile reconstruction. Um, and, but we'll kind of go from there as, as it happens. It'll take a budget amendment later in the year. Unless there's any questions, um, that one would be open for a motion.
I'll motion to approve the street lighting fund.
Support.
Motion is support. Call the roll.
Wait, one clarification real quick, sorry, the um
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I'm looking down and looking up, I apologize.
I think I just missed something. Uh, the budget amendment, what was that last part about a budget amendment?
Um, at the point in time that we identify a project is when we would do a budget amendment. If nothing happens this fiscal year, we'll have money available for next fiscal year.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Um, please call the roll. Motion is support.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Any more, Director?
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, yes. There's a whole bunch of little ones.
That's fine.
Um, Fund two sixty is the Indigent Defense Fund, the M I D C money. Uh, we have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar revenue item for the grant. Uh, we are uh, projecting to spend four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. We are currently sitting on uh, excess money from the state, so what they do is they, they take our surplus from the prior year and reduce our grant in the current year. Um, so it's intended to zero out, and if we have excess money, they just reduce the next year's grant, which is what's going on here. So it's working as it's supposed to. Uh, in fact, our, our MAC, the uh Managed Assigned Counsel is doing phenomenal for us and saving a whole bunch of time for my staff, so I'm very pleased with that. Um, but it really is, it's a state grant budget. I don't know if you have any questions on that one?
I think I have one quick question. Um, is it, say, I, I guess, um for this money, I guess my general question is, we're, we're also helping the defense attorneys do a better job with clients too, right? Cuz it sounds like there's a lot of extra paperwork. I know it sounds like we're saving ourselves some paperwork, but I would hope that these, the lawyers that are defending clients, I hope we're also working at saving their time so that they can spend their time uh, doing that because well, uh, just wanna make sure we're doing that, I guess, cuz I've heard there's a lot of paperwork, I guess, basically.
Well, yeah, and a lot of it's because of the state, you know, it's their grant and it has to be reported back to them. Um, the key on this one is the, the attorneys are being paid better, so you get more people interested in doing it. They're getting paid for all of their time, not just part of their time, so they can spend more time with their uh, clients. And the, the clients are getting better representation with this setup. Um, it did save the city some money when it started, which is good for us. Um, but the, yeah, from a defense standpoint, people are getting better representation.
Okay, and if IT somehow can help always, you know, let's try to employ them to make things more efficient.
Oh, absolutely. Our, our MAC has actually uh, worked on a fillable Adobe file, so people aren't handwriting stuff, doing things like that. We're accepting email invoices, you know, speeding things up in that line too. So the attorneys are getting paid quicker, and um on our end, we're, we're trying to make it much more efficient.
Okay, all right, good to hear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Internet, Internet Defense Fund.
Why you sound like me? Uh, can I get a second on that?
I'll support.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
And Mayor Owens?
Yes, thank you, Director.
Okay, two seventy-five, CDBG, um, actually, if Darren's still on, he could pop in. I, I, this is some road reconstruction project that we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand uh, towards that project. Um, and these are always, they net zero, we, whatever revenue we get is based on whatever we spend. I, I wanna say it's Roxanna, but I could be a year or two wrong on what project.
Um, Director Pulucci, you probably stepped away.
There he is. Do you remember what the CDBG project is?
It is Roxanna.
Okay, I was right, wow.
And they are starting it next week.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the CBDG fund as presented in the budget.
Support.
Motion is supported. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Director.
Okay, three ninety-five, Brownfield Redevelopment. Uh, this is the Brownfield Project at Nine and Kelly, the new CVS over there. Uh, we capture taxes, um, it goes to Macomb County. They send the money back to us, and then we pay on a uh, Brownfield redevelopment loan. And that's what this particular fund is for. There's really not much to it, a little bit of tax capture, a little bit of bond payment. Um, and that's, that's really it. Not much more to say about that one.
Any questions on that?
Motion.
Motion is supported. Call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Director.
Alrighty, uh, three ninety-six, the Chapter twenty Drain Maintenance. Uh, this is where we have the Chapter twenty Drain Debt Millage. We collect taxes and we use it to pay for uh, county drain activity, whether it's the eight-and-a-half-mile relief, whether it's Chapaton, whether it's the uh Lake St. Clair Clean Water Initiative. Um, so some of this is paying for Chapaton activity. Some of it pays for bond payments related to various county drains we participate in. We had, or we have built the fund up. It was building up a little bit in, in anticipation of the uh um, Chapaton Expansion Project, which has not been approved by the state. So we are now budgeting to decrease the reserves a little bit each year and get it more in line. Uh, without that particular project, the fund balance should be about three hundred and fifty thousand. So it's, it's coming down uh, for the last couple of years. Again, there's, there's not much else to say on that one, but uh you know, it's, it's us paying for our portion of county activities.
Where's the millage rate again on this? Uh, so we're reducing the millage rate, you were saying, right, this year?
Yes, I think it's going from six. I, I'd have to find my notes. I don't have them in front of me. It's either going from six point five down to six point two five or six point seven five down to six point five. I don't remember which, but it's a slight reduction in the millage rate.
All right, well, motion, we approve the Chapter twenty Drain Debt Budget.
Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
All right, what else? Well, we haven't talked about capital improvement yet. Four oh one is capital improvement. That is the sidewalk program. We do the work, we pay for it, we build the residence, and we collect it. It, as a general rule, is budgeted to be a break even. This year, it's got a slight deficit because we have a fund balance that we really this should always end up netting to zero when it's done, so if we have a fund balance, then we uh, reduce our fees or expenses to offset that. But, you know, it really is just whatever work we do, we build the residence for the work in front of their home or business.
Motion to approve the uh, sidewalk budget.
Board.
Motion is support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Excuse me, Director.
Okay, four oh five, Tax Reversion. Um, we are assuming we will get some properties back this year. So we, we've got two hundred thousand budgeted for buying them and two hundred thousand for selling them. Again, this is, you know, every year's different, but we just kind of budget a, a zero-dollar activity on these. It may be more, it may be less, but council will be approving it before we make any purchases.
Council? Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Board.
Motion is support. Call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Director?
All right.
You're the star.
We, we, uh, there's a whole bunch of little ones that somebody has to talk about. Um, four thirty-six, the Court Building Fund. Uh, there is a um, part of the fines and fees, there's a uh, building fund fee. It goes in there. It's used for maintenance of the court building. This is the one, if you recall, uh, it's been in a deficit because of the HVAC project. Um, and so we're just projecting to do as little as possible over there while we collect the money. Uh, this year, we are very light because of COVID. There's just been no fines and fees. It's only ten thousand eight hundred and forty-five year to date. But the idea is that we will get this fund out of a deficit within a couple of years, and then we can look at doing additional projects over there. But for right now, we're just trying to collect enough money to, to dig us out of a hole. Um, I don't know if you have any questions on that one or not.
Madam Mayor, I'll vote to approve the uh, Court Building Fund.
Really? Okay, motion is supported. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Director.
All right. Five one seven, Sanitary Landfill, that's the garbage collection, and then uh, the disposal authority all goes in here. Uh, so this is our monthly rubbish collection fee that's on the water bill. It generates about a million seventy a year on that. We have some additional revenues for late fees and investment and stuff like that. Um, also, any debris removal we do from the residents that are billed to the residents comes out of this uh, particular fund. Um, so that's the debris control line item. We then break down the expenses between the rubbish collection, which is paying GFL, um, and then any supervision that we have of our staff that has to handle that. And then there's the five twenty-six, the sanitary landfill, that is related to the disposal authority itself. So we keep those two separate uh, when we, when we do this particular budget. I think we're in year nine uh, of the GFL contract. The fiscal year twenty-two is year nine of the uh, the contract, so we'll be doing a rebid here in about a year. But uh, this is where we currently stand on the uh, the contract.
If I could ask one quick question about rubbish, what is the current status on GFL? I mean, it sounds like uh, a- all over the city. We're putting recycling and garbage cans, or garbage trucks, and we're putting yard-wasting garbage trucks. GFL? I mean, it sounds like a, all over the city, we're putting recycling and garbage cans, or garbage trucks, and we're putting yard-wasting garbage trucks. I mean, frankly, I think that's illegal. Like, have we, what, what's the response from GFL? I don't think I've, I've seen one.
I'll leave that one to Director Palucci.
Hey, so I sent all those emails to GFL's customer relations. I sent them again today, he unfortunately has been ill for the last week. But he has been returning emails, says he's on top of it, this is not going to happen anymore. I've kept Rich Albright in the loop as well, so that's, that's where we stand right now.
So I, actually, I, I have something to comment about this, too. My biggest concern is, especially with the recycling, like, we pay more for recycling than regular trash pickup. So if they're not recycling it, because of the process of recycling it, which I understand, if we're not recycling it, then we should be getting a discount. I understand that they might have, like, short-staffing things right now, but, I mean, if we're not paying for a service that's not being done, so.
If I could go backwards a little bit, so when we started getting calls on this, I started talking to GFL's route supervisor, and he would say things like, "It's contaminated, so when it's contaminated, we put it all in the trash." And then we've had some reports that the homeowner says, "It's not contaminated because I filled it myself, I know what's in there." So that's why I've moved it up to the customer relations, and we're still waiting for a response on that.
Well, if I could say also, this is happening, and I've confirmed with other cities, St. Clair Shores, Mount Clemens, Hazel Park. There was a fourth city I had, so they're doing this everywhere, not just in our own city, too. I guess, oh, Romeo. Romeo. So. Clinton Township, too.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I guess I at least ask now, I know it's budget, but if, you know, the contract is coming to the end, I at least, like Councilman Lucino saying, we should, you know, if somehow they couldn't recycle, they should be doing something about a rate or minimally speaking to every city, how are they not even, they're just going about doing this? I mean, like, it, it just, I am very angry about it, frankly. So I guess I just wanted to make sure we put that out there while we're doing the budget here.
I, I have, I pulled the contract up today. It was a, a contract in two thousand thirteen that we signed five years, and then in two thousand eighteen, we signed another five-year extension. I sent that contract to Mr. Albright today, so it's, it's all fresh, and we're working on it as we speak.
I appreciate that. And I will make a motion to approve the rubbish collection and disposal proposed budget.
I had a question real quick. We're a finance director, now we have a disposable authority, disposal authority as well, now with the water, we, we were able to get almost six hundred thousand dollars from the ten years. Now, it's been ten years on both ends, were we able to get a rebate also from that end to save money?
We've never gotten a rebate from the disposal authority because they don't actually sit on a lot of our cash. They do annual maintenance on the landfills. In fact, we have a liability for future landfill maintenance versus, you know, them sitting on some asset that's part of our money.
Then we make money from, you know, that garbage, oh, was it? Yeah, the station, we make money off that.
Transfer station will reduce our future liability, but it's still being used for current operations. So they don't sit on tons of money like the sanitary district did.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, no, support, I think nobody supported, I'll support.
Okay, motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Director.
Okay. Let's give three more that are all pension-related. Seven twenty-eight is the death benefit. There, we, we project, you know, our investment income, it's eighty thousand, we project our benefit payouts. It's just kind of a standard number that we use until we actually exceed it. If you notice, the current fiscal year, we've had a very good return on investment, far exceeding our projection, and we have not paid out a lot of death benefits. But this fund is one that, when the actuary report comes in, the last time, it was a hundred and eighty-one percent funded. So this particular fund is in very good shape and will be for many years to come. But we have to project something to keep the state happy. So there's not, not much to this one, a little bit of investment, a little bit of payout.
Madam Mayor, I'm motion to approve the death benefit fund.
Support.
Motion is support. Please follow the rock.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Okay, seven thirty-three Pension Benefits. This is where we, we have certain individuals, we actually only have one at the moment, but if anybody goes off on a disability retirement and their pension calculation out of MERS is less than fifty percent of their final average compensation, we make up the difference because that's what the benefit used to be. It's something that MERS could not accommodate, and we, through our contracts, have agreed to make up any difference. So we have a little bit of interest. We project out, we know the one individual and what his particular benefit is, we put in a little bit extra in case somebody else falls into that category. But it, it was pre-funded with about a hundred thousand dollars, and it still sits on about eighty thousand dollars. So this is another one that's in good shape, and we're actually approaching the point where there's nobody else that will be eligible for this benefit. They have to be about seventeen years of service, and then, then they hit the fifty percent mark, and that benefit goes away. And none of the, the newer employees that have been hired in, in the past ten years are eligible for it, so it's just a, a small fund to track a, a specific benefit that will hopefully wrap itself up soon.
Madam Mayor, I would move to approve the pension benefit.
Or?
Motion is support, no conversation, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Okay, seven thirty-seven OPEB Fund. This is the retiree healthcare. We have our pension contribution as calculated by the actuary. That has gone up about three hundred thousand dollars year-over-year. And then we have our investment income. Again, this is one where we budget about three hundred thousand a year for investment income. This is one, you can see, you know, two years ago, we actually lost ten thousand dollars. But the current fiscal year, we're already up one point seven, so it's really dependent on, on the market and what's going on. But we, we just project that out, we, we pick a number, put it in there, kind of thing. The expenses are retiree healthcare premiums and, you know, dental premiums, there's some management fees for managing the investments, and then some four oh one contributions that are, for people who opted out of retiree healthcare comes out of here. This is the, excuse me, the area where the actuary has it at about twenty point one percent funded on the last actuary report, and we've been getting people to take the retiree healthcare buyout, which, with the next actuary, we're expecting to see an improvement on that contribution number. But for this year, it's the two seven, two million seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Any conversation on this before we vote? Saying none?
Madam Mayor, I'm motion to approve the retiree healthcare proposed budget.
Support.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Director.
Okay, unfortunately, there is one more, the seven eighty-five designated contributions. This is where the people make private contributions to something specific. We record it here, we are, we have twenty-five thousand for this year because of the EASE project, and the assumption is we will be getting contributions coming in for that particular activity. So that's really what this year reflects, is the, the EASE program.
Counsel?
One quick question, is that, that activity through four thirty, is then the three fifty?
Yes.
So they are forwarding, I had been wondering, they're, they're, they are sending donations to the city then, because I, I have seen that I think one member's collecting donations?
Okay, all I can tell you is we've had three donations, a total of four hundred and fifty dollars that came from individuals, I don't know about anybody within the group and if they're collecting anything.
Okay.
If they are, if somebody is collecting it individually, it hasn't made it to the city yet.
Okay. And you said four fifty, I see three fifty here, the other one's not in here.
Well, yeah, and that was at a point in time, we, we got another hundred dollars after that report was run.
Okay. And this, if anything makes it into this fund, is tax deductible, too, it was the whole reason we made this fund, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel?
Motion, we approve the designated contributions budget, then.
Support.
A motion is support, call the roll, please.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Director.
All right, well, I'm finally done, I'm tired of hearing myself, and I've seen a lot of people drop off, so they must be tired, too.
Well, we still need you. We still need you here, unfortunately, you're, you're done, but you're not done, because budget is all about finance.
Oh, I know.
Your director, so, yeah, stay there, stay tuned. Thank you, sir. I'm going to our city manager, Ms. Doom.
Thank you. On the city manager's budget, it's fairly status quo, not a lot of change, there is one area that I'll bring your attention to, it is the seven oh five department head. Our former city manager had taken the assistant city manager's position and allocated it by percentage to a number of departments. And that was confusing, and, and it wasn't very clear, so I put it back in to the line item, and that's the only real change that we've seen here on our city manager budget. Relatively status quo.
Counsel, any questions for our city manager? Saying none? Move forward.
Motion, we approve the city manager budget.
Or?
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
I know we have our new clerk here, but I know she just got hired a couple of days ago, so are you going to speak for her on her behalf, Ms. Doom?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Good evening to your first budget meeting, Ms. Purcell, welcome.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
We're happy you're here as well, Ms. Doom.
Yes, so as we go into the clerk's department, you'll see that it is also relatively status quo. We do have the addition of the supervisor non-union, which is Ms. Purcell. The cost of that salary will be offset by the, we will have less need to hire part-time employees to assist. So we've got a balance there, and that's the only real change in our clerk department.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, saying none, let's move right along.
I would move that we accept the clerk's budget.
Or?
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Yeah, also, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Mayor.
No, we have a I, IT department, you're doing that one as well, Ms. Doom.
Yes, I will. So the IT department is status quo, there is no change from last year.
Counsel, any questions on the IT?
Motion, we approve the IT budget.
Support.
Motion is support, how did I know you was on approved IT, Councilman? Because you just said IT.
I had to just say. I wasn't going to let anyone else take that motion.
I wasn't even going to try, because I knew it would tell you.
Right, motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucino?
Didn't hear you.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Any, anything else, Ms. Doom?
It's Department two five three, it's the Treasurers Department, that is also status quo.
Any questions, Counsel? Saying none?
I have.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about, what was this last department you said?
Treasurer. Two fifty-three.
So I have a question. Yes, I have a question, would this be where boards and commissions lie?
It's a good question, Mr. Blum, are you able to?
This is, we, we have, I guess, an investment advisor, whatever you want to call him, who handles investing our surplus funds out of general fund. And these are the fees related to it. We have to track it separately per the state chart of accounts, otherwise it'd just be buried in my department.
Okay, then, I'll support, or I will make a motion to approve this one.
Support.
A motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucino?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Doom?
Yes, we also have Department two six one, which is audiovisual. And I've left that at status quo, however, I would like to bring to the council's attention that we recognize that our equipment is aging, we've had struggles with it before, and we reached out to the company that had given us a quote some years ago that was obviously too high, and council declined it. I just want to, just let you know that with today's technology, the cost has come down considerably. And if there's a potential for us to utilize some of the American Recovery Act to upgrade our system, we'll certainly bring that back to you at a later date, but as of right now, it is status quo the way it is.
Sounds good, any questions?
Sir, I had a question about that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think that was one of the items, I was grabbing my CIP real quick. Yeah. That we pushed to next fiscal year, though, right? Yeah. Audiovisual, so we were pushing that probably because of the deficit, like we were saying again. Yeah, I think before, I, I just, I think I remember from what we went out to bid, or what we were considering going out to bid for, was I think some, I don't know if it was the equipment with WOW and Comcast or something that was super expensive, because I can't imagine that a handful of new cameras that'd be like HD and digital as opposed to our, yeah, our older cameras that we have would be a hundred K. I think that was basically why I thought we were leaving that office more of a discussion point at some point to bring back, and I think what maybe we went out to bid with was bring back, and I think what maybe we went out to bid with was this very like rigid document where it had to be these certain cameras and stuff, and basically I think at like the lowest bid, it was gonna come out to a hundred grand or something like, it was something like that, I don't remember the details, but maybe if we can just get, uh, discussion going, I don't know who was going to prepare that or, you know, I don't know what Comcast and WOW are doing too, because I think we needed some new equipment there, and I don't know if we did it, and I I thought I've heard that our, uh, meetings aren't playing maybe on one of the two also. Um, I don't know if that was true on Comcast or WOW, I don't know if anyone, I haven't had cable for a long time, so I can never confirm that, uh, myself, I don't know if, you know? Counsel.
I don't believe they're playing on Comcast.
Okay.
Not since we've moved to Zoom.
Okay, yeah, and I didn't know if that was because of a piece of equipment in that room or whatnot, but I guess if we could get an update on that, I guess would be good at least.
True.
I think, I think we should certainly, uh, at least, uh, look into it, especially with the, um, American Recovery Funds, like we're saying.
Right, I I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's a option that we hope to be able to explore together. Uh, we know we've had some issues in the past, we've had meetings that haven't uploaded. Um, we've had sound issues, the mayor's had a lot of connectivity issues. So we we know we've got some updating to do, but for now, for this budget, no change whatsoever. So, if you'd like to vote on the audio visual?
Counsel.
A motion to approve audio visual in the proposed budget.
For a second.
Motion is support, call the roll please.
Councilmember Lucio?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Doom?
Yes, so we'll move on to Department two six two, which is elections. And if you'll see, that's quite a decrease from last year. We had budgeted four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, we used to date three hundred and sixty-three, and I'm just rounding. And, uh, we're asking for considerably less at one eighty-five, three nine seventy. And a lot of that has to do with the reduced cost this coming year with elections. Last year was a presidential election. We did a lot of, a lot of people needed things mailed, a lot of communication. So it was a, each time you have a presidential election, it's a very expensive election for communities to hold. Uh, just by the sheer number of employees we have to hire and the amount of paperwork and the ballots we have to, uh, prepare for, so I I believe this, uh, budget that we presented is more in line with our expectations for this coming year.
Counsel, any questions with city manager on this? Saying none? Move forward.
A motion, we approve the elections budget.
Or?
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll move on to Department two six three, which is elections, R C V implementation. Uh, as you know, this is our last election with the ranked choice voting. And so we are relatively status quo, we're actually under our budgeted amount for last year, so we've given a good estimate on we, what we think we'll still need to spend for this year at twenty-nine, one twenty.
A motion to approve the ranked R C V elections.
Support.
Motion is support, call the roll please.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly? Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Department two six, which is civil service. Uh, we have a budgeted amount which is less than last year. Uh, it's twenty thousand dollars, so it's a, a decrease.
Any questions, counsel?
Hey, do we have, I, did we not get a couple of these, I think, in the printout for the line item? Um, I had, you said it's two sixty-three for that one?
Yeah, it's, oh, two sixty-nine. Two sixty, and I've got my line item budget in front of me.
I have, yeah, it's on here, it's on page nine.
Nine?
Yes, the third one down is civil service.
Oh, okay, funds within the general fund, okay, sorry. Getting late maybe for me then. All right, thank you.
Okay.
A motion to approve civil service.
Support.
Board.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucio?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Doom, back to you.
My last line is Department two seventy, which is the personnel department, or H R as we know it. And, um, let me see. That is also, now, it's, oh, I see what we've done, sorry, you know, I'm getting tired too. Uh, Randy, if you could help me a little bit, we did some shifting, we put the supervisor non-union into our personnel department, where our former city manager had put it elsewhere, can you help refresh my memory?
Yeah, that, that, uh, was actually budgeted in the city manager budget under the administrative super, uh, administrative secretary line item.
Okay, I knew it had been elsewhere, and it was shifted into its proper department.
Yep.
So that's why you're seeing, uh, um, an increase in the proposed budget from last year, uh, sixty-two thousand nine fifty to this year, one thirty-four nine two six. And that's the position that takes care of the human resources and purchasing.
Counsel.
Ask a quick question, do we use NeoGov it says?
Yes, we do.
What do we use that for? I was just curious.
That is used for all our applicants. Uh, it tracks them, yeah, it tracks their testing. Uh, Ashley, Mariah uses it, uh, the most often, so Mariah, if you give a quick synopsis of what NeoGov is doing for us.
Sure, um, so we started using NeoGov last July to actually transition to an online application process, so we no longer require the paper applications, so everyone can apply online. We also, um, in the package that we had last year, um, received the subscription to government jobs, so it advertises to everyone across the country, um, that's interested in applying. We've actually seen a big uptick specifically in the H R role that we just had, we have applicants from um, many other states that are applying to a lot of the specialized positions. Um, so, but it keeps track, um, and keeps everything on record online in the system, so we don't have the paper apps or boxes full of applications. We can go and review them, we can shoot out automatic emails to allow them to schedule, um, interviews, um, testing and things of that nature, so it's, um, easier for us to track, um, keeps everything online, and then it's easier for, um, applicants as well.
I would actually agree, because that's how, uh, GovernmentJobs.com is actually how I found my current position with the Michigan Court of Appeals. And we use NeoGov to do performance reviews and such, so I didn't know if we did it for that also or anything.
We've not expanded into like the onboarding, um, just, so last July was the initial process, um, in launching like the application process, so we're kind of, uh, taking our time, especially being, you know, two people between Elke and I really going through the system, um, to get things rolling, so we're just getting to the point of bringing in other department heads into the system. Um, so that they can start reviewing it, and then, um, as it's needed, like our onboarding process is a little bit slower. Um, so it's easier to do it, um, you know, just with myself talking to, you know, a person that we're onboarding, being a smaller city, we're not onboarding like ten people at a time. Um, so we haven't found a need for that yet, but moving forward, um, if we can fill a need and NeoGov has a special program, we'll definitely look into, to utilizing it.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate it.
And the questions, counsel? If not, let's move forward. With a vote.
A motion to approve the personnel department.
Or?
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucio?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
My sleepy voice is coming in. Uh, any more, uh, conversation, Ms. Doom?
Oh, that's it for me, Madam Mayor.
Hey, thank you. Thank you to all the directors, um, of each department as well. Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So I had a, I wanted to discuss the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, but I'm not sure what department it's on.
Director Blum, would that be? Director Blum?
Yep, hang on a second, I gotta verify something.
Okay, I'm sorry, I know you were there.
Yep, there we are, okay. Um, in the one oh one two nine nine, that was the City Hall Citywide Department, there is a line item called operating supplies commissions. Um, and there is two thousand dollars for arts and cultural and fifteen hundred for beautification.
Okay, so, um, then I would like to go back and discuss that for one more quick minute, because I didn't realize it was under that department. Um, if we could.
Are we going back to the, uh, finance director? Okay.
Citywide, City Hall one, yes. So, um, the Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission have had, has had a really rough year with COVID and everything, and one thing that they wanted to do is underneath the mural that the D I A put in, they wanted to do brick pavers. The estimated cost for this is five hundred dollars, and they haven't been able to put it in this year. So they were asking or requesting if there was any way we would roll over that five hundred on top of their allotted amount already for them to use in the next fiscal year, because they're hoping that they'll be able to get it done this year.
The twenty-five hundred instead of, uh, two thousand?
Yes, so just for, just for this year, twenty-five hundred, though, not like permanently, just this year. And it's funds they didn't use this year because, um, of COVID, that's why they weren't able to put those papers in. Which is money they had budgeted to do it.
Now with the pavers, like mo- most people have, uh, the public pay for each brick, correct? Is that? Is that how it goes sometimes?
I know that the, um, beautification does like memorial trees where they buy bricks, you know, for their trees.
Okay, and I think the veterans over here with the bricks, you have to buy your brick to, uh, be designed with your name and stuff like that, so we can have.
I think they're just trying to clean that garden area, I think their idea is like, in the garden area there, in the, um, children's garden, they want to clean up that area, so their idea is to put these shamrock pavers down to just make it look nicer, easier to maintain, because a lot of times it gets very overgrown, and so I think that's what they were kind of looking for. I don't think they're trying to, um, do like a fundraising or a memorial thing, I don't think they're gonna have names or anything on the bricks, I think it was just gonna be kind of like a decorative art artistic, like, design.
Okay.
I'm in support.
So I would, I would motion for it to allow them to roll over that five hundred dollars. Um, and to amend, um, my, one of, I believe it was my original motion to approve the City Hall amended budget to allot that.
Support.
A motion is support, please call the roll. For the Arts and Cultural.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Since we're on commissions, I know Councilman De Monaco, uh, you're the liaison of the beautification, am I, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's a couple people that's, that, actually a couple, it's not that many that's been complaining about the, the lack of funding, so did you, wanted, did you, uh, I don't know if you talk to them often, but they said fifteen hundred dollars is not enough to beautify the city with some of the ideas they have. So, I mean, just leaving that up to you with the additional five hundred dollars to see what they can do as far as, I think you have, uh, Ms. Muro, and, uh, she complained about not having enough funds to do the things that she wants to do. I don't know if you, uh, heard those same comments.
Um, I, sure, I mean, um, that's fine with me too, if we want to increase, uh, that budget, I, I think the problem with the last few meetings was they didn't have, um, a quorum to vote on anything. They've talked about a few things like, you know, when we're doing the landscape awards, everyone's driving around the city, and they were talking about getting magnets on their cars, because otherwise, sometimes it feels a little creepy to just, uh, you know, be creeping around the city without your, your car saying something, right? It's nice when you see the code enforcement car going by, right? You know, okay, that's code enforcement, it's not just some person checking out the neighborhood. Um, they talked about like doing that, so that was gonna be a few hundred bucks at least, because I think it was like, you know, ten, fifteen bucks, and they were gonna get uh, at least like twenty-two of them or something, so each of the eleven members had one for each side of their car. Um, we talked about probably just, you know, spending some money on that flower bed that they do at nine in Grashit. Um, you know, the members spend enough time, you know, they shouldn't have to pay also to, to do that flower bed, and some of them do their own flower beds in addition to that one. Um, but yeah, um, and probably for some cleanups, maybe garbage bags and such, I know we borrowed some, Mr. Marucci gave us uh, some bags to help do, uh, the cleanup, um, but, uh, sure, I mean, if, um, if we want to do that, sure. Uh, I think the commissions are a great resource for the community, and I think we just, historically, haven't had huge amounts of money that we've set aside for commissions to do, do things that are very helpful to the community.
Right. Um, so what did you want to propose? I know you're, you're on the board, I was just listening to some of the people that was, you know, on the board that, you know, had those complaints and saying they want to do more, but we, they only have fifteen hundred dollars. And some of these flower stores are very expensive and things like that, a lot of things have been, um, inflation. And so that was some of the things, uh, that I heard, but I don't know, you're on the board, you might hear more than me, so you may know what to propose.
Sure, well, well, why don't we, let's start at two thousand, then it'd be the same as the Arts Commission then in a normal year. Um, uh, and I guess if they use that up this year, then I guess maybe next year we just reconsider again, uh, I, I guess, uh, we can always amend the budget too, if there is some project that the council would like to fund. So, a motion, then we update the beautification commission budget, then the two thousand from fifteen hundred.
Support.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Mayor Lucio?
Yes.
Anything else? Want to cover everything, um, while we're here tonight?
Uh, we certainly need to cover city council's budget.
Okay.
Don't want to forget yourself.
I don't know why that's not on here, but city manager, did you, oh, who wants to go over that? Was it the finance director? Did you want to go?
No. I'll let, uh, Ms. Doom do that.
Okay, yeah.
I see it in my, it must be in a small line item.
Yeah.
Page two on the line item.
I think I've seen it on here, but not.
I don't think it's changed.
On the agenda.
The first one, isn't it on?
That's page two, right after revenue.
Yep, very first department.
Oh, there you go, that's why I wasn't looking. Okay, city council, where are we? We're at status quo.
Yeah, exact same. A motion we.
I'll motion to support the city council budget.
Support.
Motion is support, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucio?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember De Monica?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Any other? Um, we didn't cover tonight, that's not on here, that we may have missed, there's so many, so we don't want to miss anything. I think Lucio brung up a lot.
Oh, Mr. Homer.
It's all right, the attorney.
I'm raising my hand, yes.
So make sure you get paid, I know, sorry, uh, Ms. Doom, you want to go over? Uh, Ms. uh Doom, you wanna go over the attorney fees or city attorney?
All right, and. Long, where is that? Is that right after City Council?
That didn't change either. I think it was exactly the same as last year.
Status quo. That's right after the assessor.
Right after the assessor, okay. All right, hold on, I'm looking.
Yeah, I usually do the line items from the agenda. I didn't see council or anything like that, so I apologize. It's not on here.
That's why it's it's so long. So small, I didn't see it. It's status quo from last year, no change.
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to adopt uh, accept the proposed budget for the city manager or remove the city attorney.
Support.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Any other department that we may have? You're welcome. Thank you, that we may have passed that I don't see on this agenda right here. I don't wanna skip anything. Counsel, if you can think of anything, any commissions or any other?
I had a couple of general questions, so.
Of course you do.
Hey, I think we're doing good on timing and we can cancel tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Yes. You're trying to cancel tonight, but you keep asking questions.
So moved, so moved.
I agree outside with Councilman Curly. Go ahead, uh, Councilman Damanico.
Yeah, I was just curious, so looking at the five-year budget forecast, I was comparing to last year's. Um, and I was kind of trying to figure out here how we went from. The last five-year budget forecast, which would have been the one that was included in our original printed. Budget that everyone received, and then we got the new one from Otis in email. Um, we essentially flip. Like seven million dollars at the end of the, you know, end of fiscal year, well, twenty-five in the first one, fiscal year twenty-six, you know. Um, we've got six million in the bank at the end of fiscal year twenty-five. On the first one, and then it turns into a negative one point three million. Um. Is, and it looks like the assumptions are pretty similar. I didn't know if uh Ms. Doom or. Uh, Mr. Blum, I was trying to figure out how, how is it that big of a change over those five years, um, what I'm missing?
Um, if you would, please.
And it's page one forty-one uh in that printed, the tax budget.
I'm pulling the file up now, let me. Take a look.
And I guess if, while you're looking for that, if you. I I didn't know if um. The MERS or like the bonding we're gonna do for pension. Would address some of this too. I don't think we really talked about that, but I assume that would. You know, uh, could greatly change a five-year forecast and beyond, um, if we do that pension bonding.
Yeah, and that this wouldn't reflect any of that because we we don't have a solid handle on the impact. It's just doing percentage increases. Um. Let's see, what do we got here? Um, I would have to do a deeper dive. I can tell you it's coming out of public safety. Um, but I'm gonna have to look at. The background and see what's driving that. It probably is the pension. Um, because we got a new actuary from, you know, since last year. Um. But I I'll have to verify that and then get back with counsel.
Okay, and we'd be able to then control those payments, right, if we do the bonding then, and that would help it, okay?
Yep.
Um, okay, actually, I think, I actually, Mayor, I think that was my last question, my only question, actually, looking at. The rest of my notes.
Uh, no more questions from any council members?
Uh, disappoint, uh, Madam Mayor, thank you. Um. Do you, do you want or do you need a motion to cancel tomorrow night's meeting?
Yeah, that would be nice. If, I don't know, Mr. Damanico might wanna.
Well, let's just wait.
I think I'll let Mr. Curly.
Let's just wait for what Mr. Damanica wants.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, a motion that we cancel the meeting? Tomorrow?
No, that, no, I was supposed to do that. Just sit back.
I re-withdraw my motion.
Madam, Madam Mayor, it it gives me great pleasure to move that we cancel tomorrow night's meeting.
I'll support that then.
Motion and support. Please call the roll and cancel on the meeting for tomorrow.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you, um, again, before we go, any, anything else, directors and counsel?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, I'll cut it aside, uh, uh, with the three and a half hour meeting, I do feel. I do feel a lot better, um. But uh, I'll be a hundred percent in another week, so. Keep those prayers coming and uh, I really appreciate it. Good meeting tonight. Thank, God bless everybody.
Yes, sir, I'm glad you you are feeling better.
Thank you.
Again, if you need anything, let me know, um. We're at uh Mayor and Council reports begin. Start with you, Councilman Curly. I don't know if that was your report, but if so, you still have the floor.
Oh, thank you, um. Do I have anything? No, I don't, um, just continue to uh be careful and not to get the virus and. Wear that mask and uh keep six feet apart. And um shop at East Point. There's a lot of great restaurants that are F carry out on us, goodness. You will be. It's awesome. I don't want you to go across eight mile or ten mile to eat. I'm gonna watch. That's it. Thanks, thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Damanico?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, thanks to all the department heads and. Uh, Elkie and Rich and everybody, thanks for uh putting all your updates together and making this a nice, smooth meeting. I think this. Did go very quickly for sure. Um. Guess that's about all. Thanks.
Counsel, want me more?
Madam Mayor, I have no comment. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Paul Tung Lucido?
Yeah, I just wanna thank all of the department heads for their um work on. From putting this budget together for us and presenting to us tonight, um, especially Mr. Blum and Ms. Doom. Cuz I know that they work um a lot of hours on it. Um, and just everyone stay safe. I wish you the best, Mr. Curly. Hopefully you feel better soon, and I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you all to to all the directors and even the residents that came into this meeting, lets me know how important. Um, your city is to you by always coming to the meetings, and I also wanna thank the council, you know, uh, for. Putting so many things together tonight, you know, um, some of the things we bumped heads, but at the same time, again, we all have the same agenda. Is to get the city to a better place, and I think that's what we did tonight. So thank you for all the hard work you also did tonight as well. So moving forward, I have nothing but thanks. And uh, move to adjournment, please.
So moved.
Motion and support. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Damanico?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you, you too.